I've stepped back from all of the volunteer stuff.
Yes.
Here we go. So I'm ready. Thanks for asking.
All right, it's five o'clock, so I'm gonna call the village board meeting to order. Clear roll call, please. Horton?
Here.
Jacobson? Bollig?
Here.
Peterson? Glish?
Here.
Fudrow?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
And as always, I want to thank OCA Media for broadcasting this on Spectrum Cable Channel 983. And if you are ever wanting to watch archive meetings, those are online at the OCA Media's YouTube channel at youtube.com/ user/ocaMedia. So we have several things in our public appearances tonight. Three A, I am going to actually step down from this item. I'm gonna let Vice President Jerry Bollig take over. I have a financial interest in Firefly Coffee House, so I'm gonna just let the record reflect I'll abstain from any vote taken, and I'm gonna go sit in the audience. Jerry, take it away.
Thank you. I, again, this is for tuck pointing and replacing failing bricks over at the Firefly. The recommended motion is to approve a facade improvement grant to Firefly Coffee House for $796.81 for tuck pointing and replacing failing bricks on west facade of the building at 114 North Main Street. And if I could have a second, we'll could take out some-
I'll second, Jerry.
Thank you.
The staff had some discussion for this?
We recommend approval.
You recommend approval?
Yep.
Okay, and I know Uriah is here. Do you have any comments, Uriah?
Nope, none, unless you have questions.
Are you okay with this?
Yes, I am. This is really just to shore up, shore up the building. If you look up close, we have several, a large number of bricks and mortar joints that are failing, and this is to do some maintenance before it becomes, it's already an expensive problem, and it will be much more expensive if we let it go much further.
Very good. Mike, I assume we have money in the budget to pay for this in the call?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any further discussion on this from the board? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Uriah. Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jerry. So just so the public knows, anytime a board member has any sort of financial interest in a, in a agenda item, we excuse ourselves and go sit with all of you in the audience. So, thank you for understanding for that. So, item three B, we have a discussion with Dan Bertler with Supreme Structures and possible action regarding contribution for additional expenses for a new youth center building. So, Dan, do you want to come talk to us?
Sure. Good evening, Dan Bertler. I'm actually gonna represent OCRN tonight versus Supreme Structures, which is Oregon Community Resource Network. As we, many of us know, we all reside in the Village of Oregon, and the soil issues are just the best around in Dane County, from what I find out. I just want to give a little background on this site. The village currently owns the site. The village has a lease with Oregon Youth Club, and we're very, very grateful the village stepped up and did everything they did currently with it. We, first thing we did when we designed the site is we get a site engineer involved, we do soil samples, do some borings, and we did some blow counts. And typically, you see a blow count, anything greater than ten is decent. It's basically a five-pound weight. You hit it how many times, it goes down about ten feet. This site, our blow count was two. In other words, it just dropped pretty doggone fast to, until it hit something solid. So, we hired a soils engineer at that time. His recommendation was to undercut the entire site ten feet, given the water table sitting at eight feet, that was a little pricey. I had about $130,000. We decided to go another route, hired another soils engineer, CGC. They came and they recommended an undercut at the footing line, two feet, as well as undercut of foot and pad, put on break or run, and basically put it with a fabric underneath that. It's a very lightweight building. I think the first engineer really was trying to cover himself and then some for any liability. So, I'm not asking for a specific amount tonight from the village board. Everything Supreme Structures did on this project was 100% donation beyond all our profit. We've had a lot of hurdles on the site. We've overcome them, and I think you'll see today, the Oregon Youth Club is, looks great. The lawn's in, start, thank you for mowing the grass, whoever did it. It looks great, but fast forward, here's where I got. CGC, $352 to file the report. Site work to undercut the actual footing line, 6,800. Floor undercut, again, there's a two-foot floor undercut, $19,482. Fabric underneath the floor. The additional site conditions, that was before we ended up doing asphalt. We found a soft spot in the parking lot that we basically wanted to undercut and replace. And then the concrete form work. What that means is instead of your standard footing, we widened out the footings, much larger, and we also had some more of a floating-type footing, additional concrete work, so it could span a larger area. If you add all that up, we encountered about $40,817 in excess of what we envisioned if the site was decent with soil conditions. The other item I put on here is just village Oregon fees. Those are our actual, I believe those are the combination of the building permits, not the inspection, but the actual permits along with the impact fees. And you can disregard the plan review fee, that's just a state approval fee. So I'm here tonight. I know we all work on budgets, and whatever the village board is willing to do to offset some of this would be great. I wish most projects would've went like the food pantry. The village was very gracious, stepped up, paid for all the bill and permits, $10,000 at that time, I believe, and we were very much under budget by $60,000. We gave $10,000 back to the village. We did not use that permit that was given to us, and Supreme Structures took the fifty-some-thousand dollars of savings and put it towards the youth center. So, fast forward, that's where we're at today. We're a little upside down, the Oregon Youth Club, and I'm, I'd rather focus on new endeavors than new missions that we have set aside and we're trying to break even. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Dan.
Good, Jean.
Yeah, Jeff.
So, just so I understand, is it fair to say that, at this point, Supreme Structures had broken even on the project, and now there's these additional bills that are coming in that are gonna have to be paid? And so, by, Supreme Structures has probably already paid these bills to these subs?
Yes.
So, if Supreme Structures doesn't recover some or any of this money, then that just becomes a loss to Supreme Structures at this point?
Yes, yep. And it's, it is what it is. I mean, I'm not gonna stay here and be greedy. We all have changes and change orders and bumps in the road. It's giving back to the community, and anything that you can do helps out.
And what's the total, right now, as it stands? I know you've given us several numbers, but-
Our budget, all in, when everything was said and done, was about $950,000.
Yep.
We made some additions through the project. We did put in the sport court. That was one of the items that we kind of omitted due to the fact we had some expenditures. We all felt that the sport court was very important to the youth center-
Yeah, I agree.
-so they can play basketball, and when I see the police officers shooting hoops with the kids on opening night, it's pretty cool.
So what's that net number that breaks, breaks the project even for you?
It doesn't matter. It really doesn't. I can, I can tell you, I'm, I'm more than $30,000 upside down.
Yeah.
We're trying to also see if there's some money left over that we could fast forward to the next project as well.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is not diminish every fund that we have available at OCRN.
So, I'll make a motion, if it's $30,000 that gets Supreme Structures back to even on the project, then I'd make a motion that we make a donation as a village of the $30,000 to get Supreme Structure back to even. This was a village building, it was falling apart. The village is much enhanced by this new structure being there. The village was able to get a one-and-a-half-million-dollar building, and I don't know what the village's donations were to this point, but I think it would make sense for us to finish the, finish the race.
I should also add that I believe the village did sell the existing metal building for $5,000. I might be wrong, Mike. And I, they also sold the existing EMT building as well, so.
So I'll second that motion, so we can keep discussing. Is it okay, I have a couple of questions?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay. So, so, one thing I want to point out, so, Dan, thanks for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
Just trying to work through this. So, Mike, we, one thing that I'm not sure the community realizes is that, so we tore down the existing public works building that was there, and we got, like, I think, $4,000 for it, but then didn't we spend a half a million dollars to build a new one?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure-
By Dan.
So I just want to make sure the community knows that. So I've had a few people say, oh, the community, or the village didn't, didn't donate toward the youth center. We built a half-million-dollar building-
Yes.
-to replace the one that was there, so-
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct, Jeanie.
I want, I want that to, to be in the record. And also, if we did the $30,000, where would that money come from?
We have $20,000 in contingency, and then Lisa and I would have to find, find the balance somewhere in the budget.
So we have $20,000 in contingency until when? The end of the fiscal year?
Yes, to the end of the year, right.
Okay.
I mean, that's where I would take it from. I mean, we're, we have the financial report in the packet, so we're right on budget, so we're in pretty good shape. If you're asking me, you know, it's hard to predict the next six months, but, you know, if we were trying to find an extra $10,000, we'd have to try to, well, I've got other things we could do. To be honest with you, we've done this before. When we approved the audit, we took money from the 2018 fund balance, if I can say it that way, and we, we put it into 414 and some other special funds. We could pull some of that, some of that money back from capital to pay for it, too. I think maybe I would maybe talk to Lisa about doing that versus trying to find the additional $10,000 in the general fund. Just some initial thoughts.
Other thoughts?
So, Jeanie, I just want to point out that when we discovered that the soil was bad, we actually went back to some donors and raised an additional $30,000. So, that was added on, but as Dan pointed out, we're still, we're still short, just because of some of the things that we encountered.
Jerry, do you have a thought?
Yeah, that was basically my question I was gonna ask about if additional fundraising was gonna happen to cover that possibly, but it sounds like everybody's tapped out at this point.
For that project, yes.
For that project, okay. All right. I know in the past that we've, we've forgiven fees, but that's only about $8,000, which I shouldn't say only, it's still $8,000, but.
I guess my, my thoughts are I'm not, I'm not willing to go past what we have in contingency, so we'll have to vote on this motion. So I'll probably vote no, but I would, I would vote for whatever we have in contingency, if that makes sense.
And that amount-
Or I'd also approve, I'd also be in favor of redoing the fees.
Okay.
But I don't feel comfortable with spending money that we have to rob from other accounts to do this. But that's my opinion. Yeah, go ahead.
So if we, if we waived the fees at $8,000 and took 20 from contingency, that would get us to just about 30. Is that possible, to not collect the fees that are owed?
You, technically, we have to collect the fees, because we, we gotta pay, we had a pay safe bill, and we gotta collect impact fees and things like that.
So even if we collect them, we're still gonna have to find that money somewhere? And, and I appreciate, appreciate what you said about not wanting to take money that's earmarked for something else. Is that how you feel?
I was just trying to come up, I was trying to get ready for this discussion, and I, you know, I, I knew we had 20,000 in contingency, and I think anything above that, we either have to, we've done in the past, we sort of go, in a sense, for the better term, you go hunting through the general fund, looking for savings in there, but I think what I would do to be safe, I would probably just, I can't, I've talked to Lisa about it, but I would probably pull back something out of that we put into capital equipment or something like that. That was from the 2018 transfer. That'd be my other thought I would do.
So I, so I think that that's pretty common, like you said, that since I've been on the board, there's times when we've gotta find money that isn't necessarily allocated where we need it, and that's part of, part of the bank, part of the bank aspect of the village, right?
Yeah, I mean, and honestly, I'm not even sure if the board approved the 20, Jeanie. I'm not sure I would drain contingency. I maybe would even try to leave some money in there, just, you know, we're only beginning, you know, beginning of August, something else could come up, so. I mean, typically, with the board, done in the past, you know, they've passed a motion like this, and they said the staff find the money.
Okay. What, my last question. I'd, I'd be willing, and I don't know if this is let's make a deal up here, but, you know, what if we did 20 tonight, and then best efforts to find 10, and if we don't find it, we don't find it? I don't know how you'd make that motion, but I'd like to get to a consensus. There's no sense splitting the board on a vote, and that's all I have to say, Corey.
Corey?
I guess I share Jeanie's concern with, you know, not wanting to spend more than we have, and also, I feel like we're kind of rushing this a little bit, and I'm wondering if this waits a month, then we give staff some time to look through our budgets to figure out what we actually have. I'm a little bit hesitant to just drain our reserve fund because, our contingency, because we have several months left of the year, and, you know, we don't know what we're gonna have pop up unexpected that we're going to need to fund. So, I guess, what is your timeline? Do you have, if we waited a month to give staff some time to look at this and came back and discussed it, is that a big deal or not?
No.
Okay.
Not at all. I, I think my whole goal's really just close out the project, I owe to the OCRN board to print off all the time material costs, show them what was, what was extra, what we had to do. Just, if I gotta carry it, that does, that's all right.
Mike, did you have thoughts?
I was just gonna ask, just, we need to know the amount.
Gotcha.
There's a big, big difference between 20 and 30,000.
Right, yeah, Matt.
But I just want to make, I'm a little confused about the, the, how the fees fit into the amount, 'cause I, at some, at one point, we were kind of talking about them as two separate items, and I'm, I'm just wanna make sure, are we looking at this as a total amount, some of which would have to go to reduce fees, or two separate items, one being some of these costs that we've been looking at, and then a separate amount being fees, permit fees? So I guess-
Matt, you make, Matt's making a good point. I think I'd almost focus on the top 40. It is a lot cleaner than trying to go back and do the accounting on the fees, I believe.
Just leave the fees alone and deal with the, the number on top.
I think that's the right way of thinking about it.
Yeah, Jeff.
So, then, just to put this all, just to put this kind of in a, in a framework that makes sense to me over the last five and a half years being here, we started into the capital improvement plan, recognizing that there were several significant improvements in the village that we needed to think about and address, and two of those improvements were the food pantry and the youth center. And the OCRN took both of those off of, off of us, off of our shoulders, to the two and of, probably two and a half million dollars that the taxpayer hasn't had to pay. So, when I talk about $30,000, going back to the builder that built it at a break even to help recover that expense, it's in that framework of, of an organization that built two and a half million dollars' worth of infrastructure for the village in the last four years.
Yeah, Corey?
Yeah, that's a great point, Jeff. I, you know, I, I very much feel the same way, that, that the village has gotten a fantastic deal here, and I think we do need to come to the table to make Dan whole. I just think about the timing and how we go about doing that is my biggest concern. My, you know, I would like to see, you know, if, if you're saying 30,000 is kind of the break-even point, I think that would be the fair target to aim for, and if staff can make that happen, I would be in favor of that.
So does staff think they can make that happen?
I think so.
Are you just saying that so that we move on to the next item?
Yes, yes, well, yeah.
All right.
No, I, I was actually gonna make the suggestion that, we didn't have in the past where the boards asked staff to come back, and how do you fund something, we'd come back and-
Could we, if we, so let's say we pass Jeff's motion tonight, could we then, have you come back to the next meeting and tell us where it's gonna, exactly where it's gonna come from?
You could do, yeah.
Would that be okay with the board?
Yeah.
Because I, I'd wanna see where it's gonna come from.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the comment though is, I think, Jeff, if the board approves Jeff's motion, then you will have decided to fund it-
Right.
-regardless of where the money's coming from, so.
Yeah, gotcha.
Could you, could you do it, could they amend it, doing what their amendment's saying?
Yep.
Give it on the staff review and the funding?
Yep. So then you get to make a final decision after you know how it's gonna be paid for.
Would you like to make that amended?
Can I just make that amendment, then?
I think so.
I think Dan says you're comfortable waiting a month.
Yeah, I was gonna actually recommend, if you just wanna amend that, pick up the $19,482 tonight, and I'm okay, as long as OCRN's okay, take whatever's been approved to the end of the year, and have that course of the couple of months to try to find the rest of the money.
Okay.
What do you think about that, Mike?
Well, that, that's helpful, because as we get closer to the end of the year, we can, Lisa and I will do a projection on what we think could be the surplus in, in the general fund, so that makes it easier to find additional money than, I'm a lot more comfortable doing that than trying to find additional 11,000 now. Yep.
Yep.
So can Jeff make an amendment to that, to that factor? Do you want us to vote on that motion and start over?
Well, right now, we have a $30,000 motion on the table. So, it could be a motion to amend that to the $19,000-
482.
482.
Yep.
And that could be, technically, that should be, it should be a motion to amend the main motion, to change it to that number, vote on that, and then you vote again. So you get to vote twice.
I'll make the amendment to, to approve $19,482 tonight.
Okay. Who seconded it, or anyone?
You did.
I did? I also second that motion. So then we're gonna, we're gonna-
Vote on that.
We're voting the amendment, all in favor of that.
So, Jeanie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain, since I am the chair of the OCRN.
Okay.
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 Just think I should.
We still have quorum, though, right?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, are we now ready to vote on the-
Main motion.
Main motion?
As amended.
As amended? I think Matt's here. All in favor of the main motion to approve 30,000, to reimburse Supreme Structures, right? Or OCRN?
I'm gonna say OCRN.
Okay. To reimburse OCRN a total of $30,000 with $19,482 payable immediately?
Well, that's not how I understood the motion.
Isn't that what you wanted to do, Jeff?
I understood the motion to be, it's just 19,482, that's what's approved. Whether there's gonna be additional funding will, will not be decided tonight, that will wait, that will be decided later in the year.
Oh, gotcha.
That was how I understood it.
Is that okay with you, Jeff?
Is that how you understood it?
Yeah, I think that that, that's-
I'm more than fine, I mean-
That makes sense to Mike, so.
Anything helps, so I'm more than happy to, wait till the end of the year, and the funds are available, great, right?
Bring it back for 10,000 at the end of the year, 11,000 at the end of the year?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
Okay, all right, so to recap, the motion is to approve reimbursing OCRN $19,482 to offset the additional costs that went into the youth center that were not anticipated. All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
And Randy's abstaining.
So I'll just make a point of, I was okay with the board of, say in December, bringing this back-
Sure.
...to balance. Actually, I'll put it under future judges, I don't always try to do it.
Okay.
And Dan wouldn't be any of it.
I'll call you.
I know that.
Well, thank you for all your work on that project, Dan.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I do appreciate it, and I was, we got a great place.
Yes, and thank you for making that point, Jeff, about it, it took that project off of our capital-
Yep.
-because that made a difference for me in my head. I'm like, oh, yeah, we didn't have to spend a million dollars on that. Thank you. All right, moving on to item C. We have a discussion with Senior Peppers, Ace's Main Tap, and Mulligan's. These businesses have failed, two failed police department complying checks within the last 12 months. So, I'm thinking that we were gonna, are all three businesses here? I see Senior Peppers is here, well, okay, so we're all here. Jenny, do you have any opening comments from the chief on this?
I do not.
Okay. I was just gonna, if it's okay with the board, have each business come forward, and maybe just have a brief discussion with each one? Is that what you were envisioning, or any comments from you, Mike?
The reason I put the, the resolution, yeah, from 16 in there, because I don't know if Corey, for example, knew that, that was on the books, that's why we're doing this.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go in order of the, the agenda, so, do the folks from Senior Peppers want to come up first? Thank you. So, thank you for being here. Do you want to just state your name and your address for the record for the clerk?
Yes, my name is Maggie Lee Richter, and the address is 101, Jansmiller Street, Cora.
Great, thank you. So, I think what the board is probably looking for is if you, if you have an action plan or ideas of, of how, of how we don't see you again at this table. Not that we don't like seeing you, but not in this context.
I know, in this situation.
Right.
Because I am, like, thinking, you know, so hard on this, because they made me so frustrated, because I'm going to tell you how I feel. I feel so frustrated, you know, because I, I do my class every year, and I pass, you know, for the, receive the certificate for the license, for have, you know, license, and show everybody, and training everybody, that my employees, what happened if they sell alcohol. So when I know, I notice that this thing happened, you know, I am so frustrated, because I spend and waste time with them, but the worst thing that happens is that sometimes it's a new employees, like, and now, that I have, you know, all the employees, when I had the old employees, you know, I don't have any problems. You know, that ones, they know, but now, you know, it's like, and the, some young employees or whatever, I don't know what's going on, so I'm getting crazy. The situation is that you are asking for this, you know, that situation that happened, you know, like, months ago, or month ago, you know, is, because this employee, maybe, you know, she wanna save it, they, she don't receive a ticket or whatever, and she made me feel so bad and low bad. They say that we don't give any training when I keep training to their people. So, the point is that, the situation is that I am so frustrated, because they come in, I pay for the license, you know, forgot the training, the class, two months, they leave. And they, you know, this is the situation, and now I come out with something that probably helped uncover my business and me, you know, they, they don't do that anymore. So, I am in the process that they are going to install this system, like a toss. We are going to use, like, mini iPads. So, the mini iPads, you know, they are going to say, before they type, you know, the alcohol is going to pop, you know, in there, we ID, we serve, they don't want to leave the waitress do anything in there, because, you know, they are going to check first the ID.
I see, okay.
So, this is the system, they is in process, so maybe it's taking like a month or two months and put in there, and this is the thing that I come out, but I swear, I, every day, I have to tell the wa, the waitress, don't forget check ID, don't forget, but you know, I can be all day in there babysitting on these waitress, you know, I know there is the license, I care everything about this, what happened, like I told you again, I am so frustrated when possible because I, I tell every time, every day, I, you guys, don't forget this, I got signs inside, I got storage the alcohol in the cooler, I have a big sign, do you check ID? I, I pull my hair sometimes, I say, oh my god, what, you know, yes. So now I got another solution, and I think so is this really good. I have a new application in here, that this application, you know, is like a, I can scan the IDs. I just present here, and I, every server had now, so, I put in here this application, I don't know if you guys wanna see it, and I just put it like a scan, you know, with the camera, I put the ID on the bottom on the camera, they tell me straight how old they are.
Oh, really?
How old they are, and plus it sees like a hundredish, it's in red, when it's, you know, the right age, they told me there is with green light, you know, it's that, but when it's, you know, hundredish, they pull like red, and like a, you know, a big red flag in there, and it sees fake or altered, they told me, call the police, it's fake. So, I, it's the thing that I'm going to do now with my, you know, staff.
Okay.
Because I don't wanna anymore of this. I feel so bad, I feel so frustrated, I do everything, but sometimes, you know, it's not, but now I wanna cover my business, I wanna cover my license, I wanna cover the nothing happened, we know with the kids, they, they can go and drink alcohol in there and try to get alcohol from there because I don't like that. So I don't wanna the these waitress, you know, blaming on me or blaming on the owners, they, they don't wanna put attention on they, you know, blaming the owners that we don't give training or we don't tell anything, no. All my employees know, every time, every day, I told them the same thing.
Okay.
So this is the two good new things that I have for my business.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's exactly what we're looking for is that-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I am so happy with that barcode because I say, either need a police, it's going to get me now. I'm going to be connected to DMV, I don't care if I pay for that service, you know what I mean, so, but I wanna be covered with this.
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh, yeah.
So, I applaud you for the, the two new things, but when you get a new employee, can you describe, how do, how do you train them on this issue?
Well, I trained in there, you know, as soon I get the training, I explain what is the consequence about selling alcohol to them, and plus, you know, because I got the school, I, I know, I told them, how, you know, is the people right people for serve alcohol? You know what I mean, if they see it can be, if they coming drunk, you know, and how much alcohol they can get to the people. Because if they see they, they are drinking so much, you know what, no, no more. So, or, or, it's a lot of the issues that I explain to my, you know, staff, what is going to be right for serve alcohol for the people and the customers.
I mean, it sounds like you have training, but it sounds like you, you are constantly reinforcing that they need to keep checking IDs.
Yes, every day.
Okay.
I told my employees, and when they come in, I leave, I get there, I, I, every day, you know, before I leave, or when I get there, don't forget ask for ID. This is my first thing before I leave or when I come in.
Okay.
This is the thing, for the reason I told you, I am so frustrated.
Yeah.
For the reason, you know, I come up with this, because I say, if I'm not there, at least I am covered and I feel better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Cory, you have a question?
Yeah, just a question about the iPad app that you're talking about, does that actually, so that prompts them to check ID, do they need to, I guess, confirm, do they need to scan the ID with that iPad app, or is it just that they click a box and say, I checked it?
Oh, it, it's just because, it's the thing that if I just click in here and I scan with the camera, and I, it's just they tell you, you know, the age in there.
So will it, it will still, I guess, that's not connected to them being able to place the order, I guess, in your system?
No, 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 it's nothing. It's just that you check, it's like, like a lot of places maybe you use like a, when you are security, you know, and now you see the for don't be, you know, like checking, like, reading and reading, it sees line, you take more time, and there only is just like this and like this, like as you go to the market or supermarket, you see how you do the barcodes and the things, like this, it's like this, it's not going to be like a, you are going to have problems, you are going to have issue because I scan your ID or whatever, no. It's only just one app that they give you. You can add like ten free barcodes, you know, like ten scans, you know, free, but if you got more than ten, you know, you are going to have a charge for that, but I don't care. If I get charged, you know, I don't care if I pay for that. A year, I think so you pay, but I ain't going to do that, you know, cost or not. Yeah, I don't know if you, what, guys wanna some ID, and I can check if you want, you wanna see it?
Yeah.
Okay, you can give me some ID. It's only you just open the ID.
Yeah.
And, see if it's fake.
You just open the ID and for the barcode.
Do you have a fake ID?
Yeah.
This would be embarrassing.
I, you think? Sorry, I'm going to know exactly the age that everybody, you know, of course-
Part of it should be, you should announce the person's age to the table.
Yeah, right.
That'd be a nice touch.
It's just like this, you see how it's-
You got a green light.
The green light, they aren't right, so when it's something hundredish, I do that with my daughters, you know, I got nineteen, I pulled a nineteen, and it's why I was this nineteen and red, so, I, I am safe in that, so, I just, I wanna know guys with this.
Yeah, okay.
So, do you card everybody regardless? Everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we card, well, when, when it's like older, you know, like-
Bills does everybody?
Yeah, everybody, I know, but when we, system is not too bad. The only thing that older people sometimes is not so happy.
Well-
Because-
But you know, I think if you're carding everybody, then your, your staff gets used to it, doing it, too, that might help.
Yeah, it's a good thing, because if I pay for this app, I don't want to lose any, you know, I can do, and they can feel like a, you know, I know that some people is not too happy that we, you know, ask for their ID, but I don't care, you know what I mean, we gotta cover.
Yeah, Matt.
So.
So, the village hasn't, doesn't have any specific requirement in terms of at what age someone looks like you should card them or not?
Yes.
You leave that to business owners, but do you tell your employees to card everyone who looks older than, you know, thirty or, or younger, I'm sorry, than thirty or forty?
Yeah, we require, you know, if they look like forty below, you know, like-
Forty or?
Oh, yeah, this is the forty, thirty, twenty, whatever, but fifty, you know, I, I have a waitress long time ago, that I don't know, remember is Gio, he always play with the ladies, you know, the older ladies, and say, can I see their ID, you know what I mean, and they laughing because for serve alcohol, but, but it's good idea, maybe that's the thing that he proposed, that maybe if I has this system, I can do card, you know, everybody.
I just wanted to make it clear, you're not, it, it's up to each business owner to decide what their policy will be on that?
Yes.
But I think we do, I think we do ask that you at least have some policy that you communicate to your employees.
Yes.
Where you, where you tell them, you, you should card everyone who looks younger than a certain age, and you have to decide what that is.
Yes, which age, but you know, they have already, everybody had this scanner on their phone, everybody had the scanner now. So, everybody that is working, you know, when they see like suspicious, you know, age, like I, it's not, they are going, they are doing now the card, the card system, the scanner, so, I don't know. I think so is nice that.
That was kinda fun for me, if, if they had come up and said, you know, let me show you something, can I see your driver's license and, and scanned it, and it would've popped up like that.
I know, yeah, they, they can do that too either, you know, you just make me feel, you put your thing in here, you know, and maybe the people is not so mad, I mean, they can see the age, they can see everything. I think it's a cool thing this, you know, the scanner, I guess, because like that, they are going to feel like a, look at it, and look at it, like this, they can see, you know, how is everything, it's clear, everything.
Yeah, Matt.
So.
I just wanna remind the board that we did get, we heard from a business owner that they, they were under the impression that they were required to card everyone, and then they had communicated that to some of their customers who said, you are, you know, the village requires us to card everyone, and the response from the village was, no, that's not true, we don't require that everyone be carded, we, we let business owners make a, a judgment about, you know, where to draw that line.
Yeah.
But we do think that it's a good idea to communicate to your employees, you know-
I do, yeah.
At what point do you think you should?
Ask for the card.
And if you, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to them, okay?
Well, thank you for coming in, Maggie.
Thank you.
Thank you for being prepared and, and finding some solutions. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I want, yeah, I'm happy to.
We'll hope to see you next time at the restaurant.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeannie?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because I really wanna see them be successful with this.
Yes.
So there are businesses that have tried what you're talking about, and it's worked well, but just to give you, because I really wanna see you succeed moving forward.
Do you want me to go over there?
If, if you want to.
Okay.
So, the two things that come to mind are, number one, one of the reasons we still see businesses fail or end up selling to underage people is some kids walk in with someone else's ID, so that other, so if I walk in with Jeannie's ID, if you're not looking at the picture and really paying attention, it's gonna show Jeannie's information, not mine.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I would recommend is when you train your employees, have them look closely at the photograph, if it's still-
Yes.
Cause these kids are smart, they try to find someone that looks like them.
Yes.
Ask questions, what address do you live at?
Yeah.
What's your date of birth? And if they can't give it in a quick fashion, that's another red flag.
Okay, yeah.
If ever in doubt, you're always welcome to call us.
Yes.
Secondly, with this system, even with systems where the purchase has to go through with an ID, we find employees will try to override the system. So I'm trying to figure out how would they override your system you wanna put in place, is, is they may just still sell the alcohol and not ask for ID, not ask, you know, bar scan. What I've seen, one business do in particular that's been very successful, and the reason I throw this out there is because their business is very similar to yours, is they would have the manager or the owner come out and still approve the purchase.
Yes.
Kinda peek around the corner.
Yes.
It helps with those newer employees too.
Mm-hmm.
And then that way, if, if it's a younger person and they don't have the confidence to say no, you can fall on that manager or that owner, and then they come out and they basically chase the kid away, so, just some ideas to think about, cause I don't wanna see your police-
Yeah, because I have a one waitress that was, you know, like you say, new, my husband, Diego and me, we was that time in there, and this thing happened, it was one hundredish, the, the police getting there, and then he was a new employee, and then he say, he was looking in there, in him and the age, and then he say, just one second, and then he go to me and him, and then he say, look at this, it was, we got this.
Yep. We've, we've, we've had some businesses fail, and then they make that change, never fail again.
Yeah.
Because they let the bosses do the dirty, the dirty work, you know, the hard work.
They do each other.
And that works though, you know, so it's just something to consider.
Yeah, but I, I, I am so happy that I have a lot of options, like you say, and this, because like I told you, we have lives too, you know, we gotta step out from the restaurant, I got family, I got daughter, I got some little things to take care, I'm coming back later, at least I need two hours break or whatever, I'm coming back later, but in that two hours, it's, it can be the dangerous, you know, situation, and it's when you had to training really well the employees, and for the reason I am covered with this, and the employees, you know, training, so, okay.
Alright, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant, for that, that's good. Alright, so next on the agenda is Ace's Main Tap. Thanks for coming tonight, no, this is not fun, but if you just wanna state your names and the address for the clerk, that'd be great.
Sir, my name is Bridgette Ace, we're at one twenty-one South Main Street here in Oregon, and this is-
My name is Trevor Inabnen.
Okay.
He's our bar manager.
Oh, okay. Did you get his name?
One's name?
Inabnen.
I N A B N I P.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so I, so probably same question for you, is, I guess what we're looking for is solutions and so that we don't have you before us again.
Yeah, we would like the same.
Yeah.
Because we came into the situation that we did unexpectedly, I, not necessarily by chance, but I enjoy meeting with and interviewing folks that have been in the scene for quite some time, I think that helps me with this issue, with training and with all of those things. So we have a lot of employees that are seasoned vets, that have been bartending for quite some time, the one in particular that we're here in regards, she has a mixology degree in, in her, that she's told me, so she's bartended for the Manona Terrace as well. So I do try to employ folks that have experience, hoping that that will kind of gain some ground and we won't have to do so much maintenance on the backside. Training, of course, we do make it very clear that they are working in a bar, we have a very select item menu, so we don't do a whole lot of cooking, we, we really do serve a lot of, of alcohol, drinks, things like that. So, again, we stress the importance of the training, in the training, I'm sorry, to make sure that they're aware of the things that could result in a compliance check, we ask them to check every ID, I usually state anybody younger that looks younger than thirty-five, rather safe than sorry, and I think, in my opinion, I think offense should just be a good thing because it's making sure that you look young, if you will, so I always have my ID ready and I'm never offended, so that's the kind of policy I like to see in our facility as well.
So what do you think happened in this case?
Well, when I talked to the employee specifically, I asked the question, how did this, how was this time different, and she said that there was a rush, she had finished up with the table and kind of walked by and said, what can I get ya, turned the bar corner and, you know, it was just unfortunately too fast and, and wasn't paying the attention, I guess, maybe not the attention, but it was just a, a quick motion and unfortunately, I guess, an oversight in her.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members? Can I ask, what kind of, do you have written training for your bartenders or?
We don't necessarily have written training at this point, no.
Okay.
We have a lot of verbal training, it's a lot of on the fly, some of that stuff is fairly hard to teach unless it comes up. I know with me and, and my bartender training, a lot of it was, oh, I don't know how to do this yet, let me, let me take a peek and look. Within that training program, of course, comes with the things that are on the fly and the things that we make sure to tell right away. We initially ask in the interview, you know, do you have a bartender license, have you applied for one before, those kind of questions are pretty big in my book when I do interview folks, so hopefully that carries over into their thought process into accepting the job, and then of course, in the training process, it's, it's instilled as well, you know, just making sure that we're checking IDs. I'm at the point where I'm starting to do kind of what Senior Peppers is doing and kind of making it a, make sure we're checking IDs, or you know, kind of like a howl, if you will, just to kind of remind people, because I can understand that that's a very fast-paced job, people are fairly demanding in the job where it's, you know, I'm right here, I'm right here, I'm right here, and I can understand that it gets going so fast, but I also know that's an incredibly important piece of the job, and it's fairly detrimental, if you will, so, it's something that I've-
Yeah, go, go ahead.
If I may, so I handle all the training within Ace's, and so, when I go through my daily regular role of teaching and motivating, checking IDs is very important, mainly because like she mentioned, about eighty-five percent of our sales have to do with liquor, right? So, it, it starts from the minute they walk in the door, you know what I mean, appearance is everything, that's why she said we can't card anybody under, looking under thirty-five. You know, we've got two signs internally next to the register that say ID, 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 right? We've got one on the door when we walk in, so, I think the signage is one thing, you know, it's just nailing that point home, you know, I think, it's just a matter of, yeah, getting more experience, right, and voicing our concerns, obviously this is the second time we've been here, so we kind of, we kind of know that it shouldn't happen, right? And so we use that, you know, training honestly as as a, hey, you know, we've been there, we've done that, we don't need to do this again.
And you don't either, because of course it comes with a financial.
But yeah, unfortunately, here we are, so.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you 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 have to have a written policy, so you have one somewhere?
Yeah.
Probably have a pack, um.
I'm sure it is.
It's in your license packet? So, um, what you might consider is just even laminating that and putting it out just so your staff can review it or give it to them when you hire them?
Yeah.
Just to drive home, because, um, in Oregon, this this is a, this is a big deal, this is part of our culture, so.
Absolutely.
It is, I mean, we have an ordinance about it.
Yeah.
So you're here because we have an ordinance that says that you're supposed to be here.
Yes.
So, any other, yeah, Cory?
I guess, has anything changed since we had these, you know, two failing tests? Have you done anything to change your process, I guess, to try and make this not happen again?
We've put a few sign it, signs up as well. I don't know that we had signage up prior. Um, we did put something on the front door, and we've got it at our cash register too, a couple post-it notes that say ID, um, hoping to catch some folks' attention. And again, we do try to, um, instill every, you know, when we leave or when we're coming or, um, with with fairly, um, different employees. I know he works on a fairly regular schedule, so catching those folks that maybe he doesn't see so often, um, is something we're trying to implement as well. And I think that's a great idea, maybe doing even a quarterly, um, check-in, um, sign this sheet of paper, make sure we read it over, um, and doing kind of everything that we can, you know, there's only so much, like Senior Peppers was saying, that we can do to make sure and hold their hands, we're not there all the time. But, um, just kind of covering us and making sure that we've got the documentation as well, I think that's a a great idea to implement.
Yeah, I I encourage you to have quarterly meetings and and make sure people know that there's a financial component too. They get tickets like three hundred and some dollars, so. Yeah, yeah, Jeff.
So one, um, I'm a big believer that if you keep doing what you've been doing, you'll keep getting what you've been getting. So I appreciate the things that you're trying to do, and I also appreciate the fact that there's been a relatively recent management change over at Main, and you're trying to kind of drink from the fire hose right now and and figure out how to reinvent the business, and so.
Right.
You know, um, I would say that as a trustee, I see myself as a partner in your success. Um, and to this point, and many times, I think, the conversation is is about how do you make it so painful that somebody does the right thing? And we don't always get around to how do you make it so pleasurable that people want to do the right thing? And so a thought that comes to my mind is if, you know, even if if you had like a raffle, and every ten IDs, they get to put their name in a in a bucket, and at the end of the week, you know, they get a twenty-dollar gift card to somewhere. In the beginning, at least, it would make it fun to ID people.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't cost a lot to do that, and then eventually, it wouldn't be necessary, it would just kind of take on a life of its own. But maybe thinking in, and I'm not saying that that's the solution, but maybe thinking in terms of how can you make this fun and how can you make this positive? And not to go back to the, um, to the iPad app as as the example, but that was probably the first time since I've been here having this conversation that I actually saw something cool. Um, and I, and main tap is kind of dark, right?
Yes.
And so I can even see where if I was looking at an ID, if I didn't have a flashlight with me, depending on where I am in the main, it might be difficult for me to even read what's on the ID, but the idea of having my driver's license, the picture taken, and and a bright green strip across the bottom, I don't know, that's kind of fun for me.
Yeah.
Fun enough that I came around the table because I wanted to see what it looked like, right?
Absolutely.
So maybe just thinking about fun.
Sure. And I think bartenders could wear those headlights there, strap them.
I think that would be fashionable, and I'm sure all of them would approve.
Yeah.
Yes, um, no, but I think that's a great idea, and I don't think that, um, I think you're right, not every, not every negative situation like this you can solve with a positive. And, um, I don't think you think about the positives as much, so I think that's a great idea, and that might be fun too for the employee, to be able to get out their phone or to be able to look at something in a different light, um, you know, because I'm sure their jobs can get fairly routine and, um, you know, ask like that, so I appreciate the recommendations, and that's definitely something we'll brainstorm and and take to the table.
Yeah, Matt?
Do do your, uh, employees know that compliance checks do happen?
Yes.
And so they they're aware that, hey, every, probably a couple times a year, they're going to be.
One hundred percent, and they are aware of the other compliance checks that we've received, and I'm sure that they've talked about the financial burden that it puts those in. So I believe one hundred percent that they're aware that these checks happen on a regular basis.
And, you know, maybe that's something that the village board could consider too. Um, there's plenty of businesses in town that have figured this out and are doing it really well. You know, what if the village board kept track of of the businesses that always, or that pass, and at the end of the year had like a business of the year award or some sort of a recognition for a successful business with regards to this? And then we could elevate them and the observer and highlight them as a business that's got it figured out, so that the rest of the community could could know who's got it figured out and who's doing it right.
And on the same note, also learn from that, because I, you know, some of these things that Senior Peppers were talking about, you know, those apps and things I've heard of along the same lines, but never that specific one. So that may also in turn, um, help other businesses in the in the in the town be able to become successful or to take on that same kind of ownership that they have and be successful as well. So I think that's a great idea.
Anything else? Well, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We hope we hope to see you at the main tap.
Yeah.
Not here, all right. Okay, and then third, we have Mulligans. Good evening.
Hi there.
Thank you for being here. If you just want to, um, tell the clerk your name and your address?
Uh, Steve Alt, eight thirty, Oregon Center Drive.
That's Brian Alt.
Sir, are you gentlemen the owners?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, um, so do you want to tell us a little bit about, um, any solutions or steps we're taking forward here?
They've covered a lot.
Okay.
The frustration is unbelievable. You know, we we have signs up the of the date, we hammer it home, you have to card people. In the past, we've had bartenders just do bad math. You know, we've got calculators there, which with the the signs of the date, you shouldn't need anyways, but.
The current, the current one, uh, unfortunately, this was the girl's first night. She had two or three training shifts. To my knowledge, she didn't actually have anyone that needed to be carded who was underage during those training shifts. This was her first night, she was nervous, thinking about everything except that. Unfortunately, that's that's unacceptable, you know, that should be one of the first thoughts, especially on her end, because of the the personal fine that goes with it. As far as the training, she had the training, she was told, you have to card. As far as our policy now, we're moving forward to anybody under forty, they need to be carded. There are some exceptions, regulars that are there, you know, fairly often, that individually, the bartenders know them, they know their age, they're not going to card them every time they're in. But anybody that you're not, haven't carded previously, forty is going to be the the age for us. I, you know, I don't know if that solves it. As as the officer said, there's ways around every situation. And if an employee wants to do this, they're probably going to be able to do it short of one of us being there for every single sale. And short of us being there, uh, unfortunately, with two businesses that we run, you know, on a Friday night, I, one of us is frying fish, the other's answering phones, because we can't staff, I was seven, potentially up to seven waitstaff and two bartenders. I can't physically go out there and check every single ID sale. I have to trust that our employees are going to do their job.
On that note, uh, all of our bartenders do take the safe server exam, and and our licensed bartenders, a lot of our servers also attend bar with us, so they're our licensed as well. It's been a standard rule, if you're not comfortable with the table or you're not sure, go get one of the bartenders, get the manager, one of the, one of the licensed people, have them check. Unfortunately, we're still, like you said, this was the last one, was her first night. Yeah, first night alone.
First and last night, she quit after.
She was so embarrassed and taken aback by it, she did not come back.
As far as with the the app with Senior Peppers, we, at the other location, we have a much younger clientele, and we've looked into trying to do some of those things. I I know, Jeff, you you were excited about it, there's a lot of people that are not with identity theft. I don't know how many people are going to be excited about you pulling them out your phone and snapping a picture of their driver's license, front or back. You know, I personally, I I would just say no thanks, I have a code, you know, I'm not giving someone my ID to take a picture, I don't know what. I, it's not that I don't trust people, but I don't trust people. You know, and unfortunately, we've heard stories about people in our business bringing in their own credit card swipers, getting people's information that way. So I'm not sure that I would be as as excited about that kind of a thing as you, you know. I I'm sure there's something that we we could do on on the technology front, but unfortunately, until people are more used to maybe something like that going on, and maybe we're the 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 leaders of that, I guess. But I I see a lot of blowback from people saying, what do you mean, you're going to take a picture of my ID? Are you going to snap my my driver's license?
Where's your other business?
In Madison.
Okay. So in Oregon, I I don't know if you guys know this, but, um, we have a different culture here. Steve, President Steve Staton worked very hard to, um, have a culture here. And so the businesses that are here, um, I mean, I lived here for twenty years, I expect to show my ID. I'm forty-seven, I expect to show my ID.
Yep.
So, um.
I'm not saying people don't want to show their ID, I'm I'm just saying, as far as with the technology, taking a picture of it, now that somebody you don't know has your.
I get it.
Your name, your address, you know.
I would just never, I don't want, I don't want to sit here and listen to you tell me that someone's going to be, um, offended if you ask their ID.
No, I'm not.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm just saying as far as.
Because that defense is never going to wash with me.
Yeah, 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 no, no, absolutely, if they don't want to show their ID, they're not being served the gun line, but.
Okay.
I I'm just saying from the.
Gotcha, from the technology.
On somebody's phone or.
Matt, did you have a thought on that?
Yeah, you know, my my impression, I I understand your concern about the technology. If if somebody wanted to take a picture of my wife's driver's license, she would say absolutely not. That's just, she's concerned about privacy and and things of that nature. But but I can imagine a lower tech solution, I think you said some of your employees, maybe it made just an error in calculating the birthday, but I mean, if they got with them, you know, or in honor before this day.
And we did put that next to the bill, yeah.
Maybe if they have, maybe if they have it in their hand or something, instead of the phone with the picture, it's birthday.
You just write the year on your hand every day. What is nineteen ninety-eight right now?
Ninety-eight, yeah.
Yeah, see, I know it, I have a business.
It's not.
And we have a wall in the kitchen with all those things posted.
Packet that the police department sent us is up there for them to see.
So one more thing, though, that you talked about this new employee, she'd have several training shifts.
Yep.
And when I was a young person, I was trained as a waiter too, and I had training shifts. And I don't remember, um, this issue ever being addressed during any of my training shifts either. And it seems to me to be a good idea to incorporate in your training shifts, you know.
It was explained, but.
No, but I mean, I think you have somebody there and where they have to make the call on carding, and if they don't, that's an opportunity to say, you know what? That's a three hundred and eighty-dollar ticket right there, if you if you don't make the right call. Um, and I would have appreciated that as a young waitstaff person, because, uh, and when you're a young waiter, you're trying to please your customers.
Yep.
And 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 carding, and for some people, could be an uncomfortable thing to do. So some, I I like the fact that you have these training, uh, pros, that you train people, they probably have to actually wait on people as train, when they're being trained, right? And that would be such a great opportunity to help them get over that.
Get used to asking.
Ask if they're armed.
I will say, this was an experienced server that came to us too, so we felt, I think there was a little more confidence there, she had worked other places. It wasn't her first, you know, serving job, so to speak, but.
Okay, other comments? All right, well, keep up the training, gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. Hope to see you at Mulligans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other direction on this, other than keep doing what we're doing? I mean, I'm in favor of compliance checks. We're we're doing two a year? And then do the businesses that failed, do they get another one? Sometimes they get three, is that right?
Sometimes, and then sometimes if we receive information, um, that sales going on without carding or underage, we may do another one.
Okay. I would just, I would put all businesses that serve alcohol on notice, like, this is Oregon. We do, we do compliance checks, it is what it is, so card, ID. Yeah. All right, so we are going to go on to item D, which I think we have some folks here for. Uh, this is a public hearing to discuss and act upon a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Oregon and the Town of Oregon. The agreement provides for a boundary adjustment between the Village of Oregon and the Town of Oregon, which is transferring part of Lincoln Road from the town to the village. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Petitioners' comments, uh, Mike, do you want to say anything at this point?
Sure, I'm going to wrap this up here.
Yep.
So essentially, what we're doing is we're, this is, this is a record agreement that we replaced the agreement that the village signed with the town as part of the, uh, Dan Fleming development, which is now called Bergamond. And, um, when part of the, uh, when that was annexed, that got annexed all the way to the south side of Lincoln Road. So part of, but but part of the, uh, Lincoln Road that is immediately south of the Windcrest subdivision, which is between Bergamond and Union Road, uh, it's only, it was only annexed to the center line of the road. So this would now allow us to have the road, uh, Lincoln Road all the way from Union out to, uh, the end of Bergamond, um, development. And then the town would own the rest of Lincoln, continue to own the rest of Lincoln Road out to County D. And as part of the agreement, and this gets all approved, the village would pay two hundred thousand dollars to the town, uh, which they would put towards paving their share of Lincoln Road, and then we we would pay, uh, for our share of paving Lincoln Road, most likely, uh, next year, if not the following year. It's kind of a summary of it, I'll just leave it.
So do you want to talk a little bit about what the end goal of this is?
The the end goal of this is to make it easier and cleaner to know who owns what on Lincoln Road, and that the village is spending money on an actual village road versus a a town road.
Gotcha.
And 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 the reason we, we're talking about giving the town some, uh, funding is that, uh, as part of the original agreement, we would have to bring the road up to a certain, it's called a pacer level, and Jeff felt that the two hundred thousand dollars was a fair estimate.
And what's the timeframe for that of resurfacing Lincoln Road?
Uh, it would be, it won't happen this year, but it could happen next year or possibly, I think the agreement calls for two years, I believe, it's been a two-year period to do it.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Yeah, Jerry?
Yeah, so just, Mike, just on a note of clarification here, I know for myself, this agreement has always been very confusing, because, can you use your cursor to show on the screen that there are?
So right, right here, this part of it basically is, I'm sorry. It's part of Lincoln Road here, that's in front of the Windcrest subdivision. It, this is, it was only, when it was annexed into the village, it was only annexed to the center line of the road.
Okay.
Again, when when the Fleming development was annexed, they went to the, all all the way to the south side of the road. And that's what's confusing.
Okay, so.
But then, but then to the west of that, the town owns both sides of the road.
Okay, so in the first section.
Yep.
Just highlight that first section if you can.
Right here.
Yep, and then the village owns all of that road, right?
Nope, that's where you own the, to the center line.
Okay, so which?
Let me start over again, so from Union, so this is the Windcrest subdivision?
Yep.
So from Union out to the edge of the Bergamond subdivision, we only own to the center line of the road.
Okay, which side of the road?
The 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 north side.
The north side road, and the south side of the road is owned by?
It's in the township.
Okay, so again.
But then when you go further west of that, we, when the Fleming development was annexed, it was annexed to the south side of the road.
Okay.
And that's what's, and that's what's confusing.
Yeah, so in that second section, the village owns all of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what this, what this would do, it would clear up.
It, the village isn't own, I mean, it it's in the village.
It's in the village, right, right. So what it would do, it would clear up that first section where the the township owns the south side of the road, and the village owns the north side of the road.
And the current agreement has this, you know, maintaining Union Road, I'm sorry, Union Road from Union out to out to D.
Right.
And and if you look back at the the agreement, the two, two thousand and two agreement is attached, responding to Jeanie's question, we would have to bring that road up to a certain.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I understand that. Yeah, so the, uh, it's further complicated when you start doing snow plowing and road repairs, because you have to, uh, again, especially on that first section where they, there's two different owners.
Right.
Depending on which side of the road you're on.
Yeah.
Um, so to me, this is is something that's long overdue. And where would the two hundred thousand dollars come from?
The village has been collecting money from, um, the Bergamond subdivision or since two thou, whenever it was annexed, two thousand and three, from, uh, from La Hachsee.
So it's in a fund?
It's in a fund.
Okay, so, and then the, that, those funds would be turned over to the township then, once the road was repaired.
Correct.
And it's going to get, from reading the material, it looks like it's going to get ground and overlaid, right? And what about the shoulders?
Uh, I'm not sure about the sho, I mean, the shoulders would be enhanced as part of the project.
Yeah, I think from.
Question for Jeff, I mean.
What I saw here, the shoulders are going to be a little bit wider, which is something that the the public has been very unhappy.
Right, right now, when you're out through the, the edge of the road is is in some cases, well, you know, that is chipped away.
Yeah, it's crumbling.
It's crumbling, yeah.
And and so I should say that.
There really are no shoulders in a lot of the places right now.
And I should really say that part of this came up with both the village and the town, uh, have been approached by people who want to make the road safer for bike riding. I I don't know, what we would do is going to actually make it safer for a bike ride, because there there will not be a shoulder, a paved shoulder. But that's what started, and people are complaining about the the shape of the road, yeah.
No, I just bring all this up so everybody understands exactly what we're talking about.
That's good to know, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff and Cory?
I would really encourage us to think about how we could just take that over an extra ten feet and make a a decent bike path along Lincoln Road. Uh, because I do think that that would be used by the residents, especially coming out of the expansion of Bergamond Boulevard, and uh, and it and it would be a nice enhancement, and since we're already going to be running a paver and pouring asphalt, now would be the time to do it.
I think Jeff and I talked about that, but I I think rather than doing a shoulder, he would actually do a, you know, he'd have to figure out how to do that, he actually do a bike path.
Like what, uh, Fitchburg did with, um, with D.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he feels it would be hard to do it, uh, paved shoulder, but.
Oh, so you wouldn't do it exactly adjacent to the height, to Lincoln Road, you would go off-road and make it a separate project?
Initial thoughts, Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cory?
I like the aspect of just simplifying who's doing the maintenance. One thing that I see, though, um, that I have a question about is, um, does this create the situation then when a town resident wants to have access to Lincoln Road, that they would be coming to the village for a driveway permit or for approvals, that would be somewhat confusing for town residents?
Yes, conceivably, yeah.
It's interesting, that hasn't come up since the Vermont was, uh, annexed. I don't think we've dealt with that.
So you're thinking along the south side of the road?
Yeah, the south side, yep, yep.
Most of that's a cornfield, I I'm trying to picture. I'm trying to picture where that first farm comes out, and I think it's by Brynhild.
It's 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 a cornfield, yep, yep.
That would be me. I'm the only one, but didn't you bring Tom into that play right there?
Hey, hang on, we'll we'll get to you.
Okay.
Yep, no worries. Yeah, Jerry, do you have one more question for?
I did, I did. I was just going to, as long as one of the property owners spoke up, my question was going to have to do with that. Will this affect any of the property owners on the south side of the road in relation to property taxes or fees or anything like that?
Let me ask.
Yeah, so my understanding is that on the south side of the road, and and we haven't been able to answer all the questions that people might have about this yet, but here's my understanding of the general lay of the land. So properties on the south side of the road, it it may well be that the way this works in a township is that the property owner actually has an underlying interest in the in the land all the way to the center of the the right of way.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they may indeed have legal title to half the road. Of course, their right, their title to the property is subject to the public's right to use part of that property for public right of way. So what I I'm not exactly sure how this would unfold post-approval of this agreement and adoption of an ordinance changing the boundary. But what I suspect would happen is the Dane County property lister is is going to have to look at this and potentially would create separate parcels to show that, you know, there's a sliver of this property that is now in the village adjacent to the property that's in the town. We still need to talk to the assessor about how the assessor would handle that. And I can't today tell you exactly how that's going to be handled. I suspect that if there is a tax bill on that, I can't imagine it would be a very substantial tax bill because you prop the property is a road. But again, we haven't had the opportunity to 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 determine exactly how that would play out. Yeah, we were looking at that, but then we put that work on hold to have some further conversation with the town and the town's attorney about this. And and we did. And the direction we got from them was they want to keep moving forward with the process based on the agreement we have. So we'll have to get back to calling the assessor and asking, you know, how are we going to manage this? Our goal would be to have no impact on the owners to the south, if that's possible. Our goal would be, you know, they don't receive a tax bill, they don't have to deal with that. But I can't tell you tonight 100% that that's not going to happen.
Yeah, Jerry?
So Matt, how how does a property owner stay abreast of this situation so they know exactly the status of of?
How it's going to unfold?
Yeah.
You mean, assuming the agreement is approved and then we go forward?
Assuming the agreement is approved.
Yep.
And again, the reason I'm asking this question, it seems kind of silly that somebody's going to get a a property tax bill for?
33 feet of right of way?
34, 32 feet of right of way, yeah.
Yeah.
And and I'm sure they don't want to receive a property tax bill. I don't have to even hear.
And now to anyone who's here to speak in favor of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and and again, if if it can be avoided, it would be nice. I just don't know if it can be avoided because if indeed.
Okay.
They have a they own land that is currently in the town that will be in the village.
Okay.
I just can't tell you tonight for sure how the property lister is going to deal with that. I we did have one call with the Dane County property lister, and they said they don't like it when this happens because it kind of makes their life difficult too, but.
Yep. Okay, back to my original question. How would a member of the public stay abreast of this situation so they know for their own benefit?
What's going to happen?
Yeah, what's going to happen?
Well, so there's a hearing tonight here.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be a hearing at the town to do the same thing. And then then there'll be another meeting where the board would have to approve an ordinance. And then I think there's even a boundary agreement has to be approved. So there's a number of steps involved in this.
Yes, so the owners are getting notice of all of of all of these proceedings. So in fact, they I think they had to get notice specifically of the public hearing process. So they'll be able to keep a track of that. In terms of what actually ultimately we learn about what's going to happen from a property listing and a tax bill standpoint, well, if there is a tax bill sent, they'll receive it. So they'll certainly get notice in that sense. My guess is the way things are done here in the village is that we're very proactive and we try and keep people informed. So my guess is that.
We reach out to them.
We will try and reach out to people and let them know.
Okay.
This is what we've learned about with the process. This is how it's going to affect you.
We need to come in and talk to the back, talk to the board too about.
Okay, yeah, Cory, go ahead.
I guess if I were a property owner, I would really want to know those answers before all of this goes through. It seems like there has to be a way that we could find out what would happen so we have the answers before we approve this.
And if that's what the board wants to do, that's what we'll do.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I didn't want to spend the legal money if the board was not going to, so what comes first? And then the town has to also prove it. So we're, you know, the concern is do we spend Matt's time looking into it? And if it doesn't get approved, then?
I I guess if, you know, we could get the public's support of this, if we tell them that we'll get that answer before it gets voted on.
Well, I think.
Then spent the money to figure it out, I guess.
Yeah, do you have a thought on that, Jerry?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a recommended motion tonight to approve this resolution, which is the agreement. So assuming we approve that, then they can move forward, I assume, to.
Well, I mean, so the process is a little complicated here. So village board, public hearing tonight. Village board has to adopt a resolution approving an agreement, the one that's in your pocket. Town board has to do the same thing. They haven't done it yet.
Correct.
They have to have a public hearing. They have to decide whether to approve the agreement. If both the town and the village approve the agreement, that's still not the last step in the process. The village board would ultimately have to also adopt an ordinance approving the boundary change that's described in the agreement. So those are all steps that have to be taken in the process. But again, it's up to the board. I mean, if if you want to kind of modify the approach here and you want more information and you want answers to questions, then let us know, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, just for.
So two questions. The first thought that comes to my mind is eminent domain. Does that come into play or can that come into play to take this issue off the table?
Well, it could in the sense that, I mean, you're talking about buying the property owner's interest in the property under the, you know, yeah. And that could happen either in a voluntary way or through eminent domain, although it's not really necessary. I mean, if if the, as I understand it, if the annexation takes place, not the annexation, this isn't an annexation, if the boundary change takes place, it's still public right of way. And so the 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 public would still and the village would still have the right to use it, the road, as public right of way. If we were to acquire all right title and interest in the property, including their under interest in that right of way to the center line, that would mean certainly they have no longer have any interest in that property at all.
Would that?
They wouldn't get a tax bill then.
That would address the tax bill issue?
Yeah, yeah.
And then the second is just a statement that this is a process as you as you've outlined. And I personally don't see a reason to slow the process down. But I do think that thoughtful discussion and engagement is important.
Randy?
So so I'm going to I'm going to agree with Cory. I if I were a property owner in these questions, I I think I'd want to know these these answers. I'm a little uncomfortable not knowing these answers.
Okay, well, we'll take that under advisement. And then so let's hear from the public, does that sound good? And then we and then we have more under number four. We still have time for more comments and questions. All right, so from the public, who wants to go first? All right, come on forward.
This is a really basic question.
So I just need you to sit in the microphone. And then if you could just state your name and your address for us.
Amy, A-M-I-E, Pittman, P-I-T-T-M-A, on 5093 Lincoln Road.
Thank you.
I think we live where where half of the road belongs to the town and half of the road belongs to the village.
Mm-hmm.
I think.
Okay.
My question is, I don't I didn't get a lot of information on the letters. I mean, it invited us to come here to learn about what the town is asking. But but really what I'm understanding is it doesn't change our property living in the the town. It's just the road.
Correct.
Up until the road ends, like not into our ditch or our trees or anything, just right there.
It's the right of way.
Okay.
33 feet from the center of the road, I believe it's a, you know, that's the right of way width. All all these roads, it's a 66-foot wide right of way.
Okay.
33 feet in the town, 33 feet in the village. So the idea is that 33 feet that's in the town would then be transferred into the village from a jurisdictional standpoint so that maintenance responsibility going forward, snow plowing, maintaining it, is the village's responsibility.
And the other part of my question is, but so then that's what you guys are voting on or we're going to you're going to see if you're going to approve that or step one of four steps. But then if they decide, if someone decides we want to add a bike path or we want to add shoulders, that I mean, that road is it is then they're in our shoulders. But then would that somehow not be like a decision that we have to make or we have input, it could just kind of come onto the side of our tree line where we have pines? Like, is that something that?
Well, so so it's kind of a couple of things to say about that. First, so the right of way width would remain 66 feet. And so one possibility would be to do something within that 66 feet. And if 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 we're able to do it within the 66 feet, then we wouldn't need, for example, to buy to buy land from a budding owner. We wouldn't have to acquire additional right of way. If if we and if we if we did need to acquire additional right of way on either side, we'd have to buy that. We'd have to acquire that from the property owner. If if we're operating within the existing right of way, then and we don't need to buy additional right of way, we'd still probably go through a public process where, you know, we'd have meetings where people could come to the meetings and and talk to the board about whether they think it's a good idea or a bad idea. I don't know if I'm getting at your question entirely.
The bike trail question was more to do on the north side of Lincoln Road along the Bergamont Development. That's what, yeah, that was has to do more with that side. We haven't even talked about anything else. And actually, I because of the width, I doubt we're going to do a bike path along the road. At this point.
Jeannie, can I?
Do you have a question for Amy?
No, I have a I have a clarification that I want to be a little bit careful about. We said 33 feet from the center of the road. The road's in all cases is not necessarily centered within the right of way. So it would be the 66-foot right of way. The road isn't always perfectly centered. So just, you know, we don't, I don't know if it is or isn't here, but.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's it can be off significantly and the road can be shifted one way or the other.
Right, and that's a it's a it's a great point. So when we're talking about, so you've got the pavement, which you can all see, that doesn't necessarily go right down the center of that 66-foot wide public right of way.
Country road, yeah.
So that, you know, it it's not an exact science in terms of going out and looking at the pavement and being able to say, you can you can tell just by visually looking at the pavement where the 33 feet is on either side. We that's why we hire a surveyor to go out there and draw a picture like this.
Okay, thanks, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Come on up.
I want to make sure somebody else was not here. I didn't see them.
So if you just want to tell us your name and where you live, that'd be great.
My name is Ray Guries, G-U-R-I-E-S. I live right on the corner of Lincoln and Union Road, the little white house with the barn and all the daylilies.
Okay.
Everybody's got the place. I've lived there 41 years. That road, Lincoln Road and Union Road, in the last 20 have become far more heavily used. There isn't a day goes by that there isn't a tractor trailers delivering materials. Heavy, it's it's no wonder the road is breaking down as as bad as it is in many places. And it's not going to get any better if people can't decide who owns it and what's going to happen to it. Somebody who who has the main interest in that property south of of Lincoln Road refuses to come to to visit you folks, you know who he is. But he's very interested in what you're doing, and he wants you to know that he has no interest in in agreeing to anything that that you might want to do, just so you so you have that understanding. On the other hand, I'm very interested in what you might try and do. And the idea of public safety, especially bikes, is a real concern of mine. This last weekend, there must have been 500 bikes come down Union Road from the south on some sort of.
As a fundraiser.
Fundraiser of some sort. There's hardly a weekend goes by that there aren't hundreds of bikes on that road. Somebody's going to get killed on that road. If if it isn't upgraded, widened, whether you put shoulders or not, that not putting shoulders isn't going to keep bikers away. They're going to be there.
Yeah.
One way or another. If you put a bike lane on Lincoln Road west of Bergamont or or west of Boogless's Woods, where where that starts, all right, I could see people finding that attractive.
Yes.
I don't see any way that you could put a bike lane on the north side of that road down to Union Road. All those develop, all that development, all those parcels, I don't see that happening.
Right.
The south side, on the other hand, you've got them, Boogless and me for a stretch of probably a better part of a half mile. I think there'd be there'd be some interest in that for public safety purposes primarily. But I think as I've looked at my deed, I think it reads from the center line is.
Yeah.
Is 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 my ownership. But you know, it's whether you whether you bought it or or claimed it or. I understand the easement that goes with the public transportation. I'm not going to argue about that. But I do want to make one other point that that I've visited with your Public Works people this summer again. And that is when when that development just across from me and and Boogless was put in, they did some contouring and culverts and easement, and they graded two of the culverts. What that did was allow all the corn stubble from Tom Boogless's field to barricade those culverts. Those culverts were full of corn stubble, and what it did was flood my property and flood my basement. And I'm not happy about that. I got Jeff to take the route, to take the culverts, the the.
The grates.
The grading off the culverts, and he said he'd consider leaving them off. I think if if the if the climate changes the way some people talk, even that isn't going to be enough. There aren't enough culverts to move that water off those fields through the village. I I went 30 years without a basement flooded. I've been flooded three times in the last six years. It's it's starting to get old. And I can see the problem is that the water doesn't move under the road.
Mm-hmm.
There aren't enough culverts or the corn stubble blocks it or or something. That's that's another issue. If you're going to talk about doing something with ownership of Lincoln Road, I'd say take a look at at the culverts and the drainage along that road too. I'm happy with your Public Works people. I haven't tried to claim any failure on the village's part for for flood damage. But a few more floods and and it might start looking attractive.
Yeah, so we'll make a note of the.
I mean, I'll talk to.
The water, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, if if there's anything that that you want Boogless to know, let me know. I'm he's expecting a report.
Tell tell him we we have no interest in his land. We just want to own the pavement so when we make improvements to it and plow it, it actually is belongs to the village. We have no, I I personally have no interest in his land. Please reassure him, right, everybody? Yeah.
Unless that doesn't reassure.
We just want to make the road better. It's really all we want to do.
Deep down, he knows that, but if you're the government, he's not.
I get it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Jeff?
So two quick points, and I I really, really appreciate you folks coming out and talking to this because it it it's really helpful for me to understand the history of that road from your perspective, having lived there for as long as you have. from your perspective, having lived there for as long as you have. So two quick points. The first point is that this is inevitable, I believe. There's an agreement already in place that the village will wind up taking responsibility for the full road at some point in the future. And that point's already been set. And what we're doing here is, is actually just moving that date up.
No, not, not, not taking, not taking over, just maintain. We maintain it to a certain year. And when that year happens, we have to return the road back to the town at a certain level. But not that we, that would not be like we're doing.
So the town would wind up getting the full road from Union all the way out?
No, here, let me, let me explain. The, right, the jurisdiction will not change under the, under the existing agreement between, before, when we get, before we get to the end of the existing agreement, which I think is the year 2026, or eighty percent of the building permits have been issued on the Bergamot. The village, that, that existing, that, that existing agreement just says the village has a maintenance obligation for the full width of the road, even though it's not all in the village. And we would have to, by 2026, bring that road condition up to a certain level before that agreement expires. Once that agreement expires, again, then the village no longer has any maintenance obligation over the south half of the road, just the north half. And, and the village, and the town would then have to continue to deal with the fact that half the road is under village jurisdiction, half the road is under town jurisdiction, which is complicated for both parties. So the idea here is to say, let's not wait until 2026 to fix the road, number one. Let's do it sooner. And number two, let's change the jurisdiction so that from Union Road out to, you know, wherever that point is.
Basically, it glenway.
Yeah, then going forward from that, from the, you know, that stretch of the road is entirely a village maintenance obligation. And then to the west of that is a town obligation. And it just makes it easier from an administrative standpoint for the town and the village to say, village is responsible for this piece of the road, town is responsible for that piece of the road. So, so this agreement would do two things. One, it would move the, the date of fixing the road up...
Six years.
Sooner.
Six years, basically.
And two, it would change the jurisdictional map so that it's easier going forward. You know, village piece, town piece, instead of half village, half town.
Village.
Town, village, you know? Right now, it's kind of a crazy quilt out there.
Yeah, so, and, and the current agreement, the village shall maintain Lincoln Road at or above a Level Four on the Pacer scale. And the Pacer scale, Corey knows, this is, that's how you rate a, you know, the shape of a road. Unless Netherwood, and this is where it gets complicated. Unless Netherwood is maintained by the town at a lesser standard. So it gets really kind of, yeah, it's not...
So my, my...
This agreement cleans it up.
Hang on, Jeff has a second point.
Because I really believe in context. And again, you know, having been here as long as I've been here, I've seen things happen. But when we deal with them, we always deal with them in, in pieces. We see them in pieces. We don't see them over time.
Yeah.
And, and so I want to make sure that we remember that somebody has been killed on Lincoln Road, riding their bike already. So this isn't something that might happen in the future. This is something that's already happened.
And, and that's, again, that's why Matt's making a good point about identifying the disagreement. Actually, take us out to 2026, the current agreement. And this, by doing this new agreement, it actually moves fixing Lincoln Road up basically six years.
I can't, I can't imagine waiting another six years to fix that road.
And I think that was the, the thing that pushed us...
Right.
Both parties, the town and the village, to try to bring this forward, correct?
Corey, do you have a point?
Just, I, I'm a little curious. Is there another solution here to where we take the crazy quilt ownership and leave the ownership alone? And have a clean maintenance obligation agreement? Which it says, we maintain these sections even though we don't own them, but we have an agreement for the maintenance. Is that a possibility? That way, we don't need to get into the, you know, taxes and changing, you know, ownership or permits or things like that?
Well, that, that's difficult because, again, if the road, if, if we leave the jurisdictional lines where they are, then from a maintenance, if, what we have today is an agreement that does place the maintenance burden on the village, but we have a lot of uncertainty and two different jurisdictions to decide what to do and when to do it. So the town might say, hey, you should fix that road now. And the village would say, well, you know, we're not gonna do it now. We'll do it three years from now. So it's not easy to... If, if you're questioning, and, and it sounds like you're suggesting, what, on a permanent basis? We would say, the village is permanently responsible for maintaining the north and south half of the road? And would, would it just be up to us to decide when, or would the town have a voice in that?
I think that could all get written into the agreement.
We should plow the north side and they should plow the south side.
And that, and that's where we'll be in 2026 if we don't change this.
That's what I'm saying. So I don't want to do that. Yeah.
Have we closed the public hearing yet?
No, we're still doing that. All right, so, public hearing, we're public. Come on up. Town, town folks, I see you back there. Aha, we have a, we have a live one.
Arlen Christensen, town board.
Thank you.
As far as this tax we were just talking about here, you've got, and you don't know what to do about, you've got either twelve or thirteen more property owners already that you must know what they're doing. They're not getting tax bills, right?
Okay, Matt, man, that's a great question. Because what happened was when the, when the annexation happened with Dan Fleming, that did happen. And people on the, on the other side of the, south side of the road called, obviously called the village and said, what the heck's going on here? I just couldn't, I told...
Because they did get tax bills.
I didn't. I couldn't tell Matt today what, what happened because it's like almost seventeen years ago. So, yeah, I, I, I know. That's a very good point.
So they know not, so that's right.
Well, could I, could I just brief, just to make sure that initially, they did get tax bills. They don't anymore. And Mike and I just can't remember what happened seventeen years ago to get that straightened out so that they wouldn't. So we, we were trying to figure, we, we were trying to dig into that to say, you know, what happened and could we...
Prevent that.
Could we prevent property owners today?
Prevent these people from getting tax bills.
Yeah, could we prevent them from getting tax bills? And we just haven't got to the bottom of it yet.
Well, I knew the rest of them didn't get them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? We're very friendly.
Jeannie, can I?
Hang on, I'm still in the public hearing. Anybody else? All right. So now we are on to Village Board comments and questions. Randy?
So, so Matt, help me figure, help me understand this. This is the, the problem I have is with these other questions. If we, if we approve, I'm, I'm all in favor of fixing the road and all that sort of stuff. It's the problem with those unknown questions that aren't answered. We approved this. What recourse? When are we gonna get those questions answered? And what, what is that gonna do to the agreement? If we approve, we, it's like it just happens, right?
If you, if, if the Village Board approves the agreement and the Town Board approves the agreement, then yes, I think this would be implemented. We would, you would still have to adopt an ordinance to effectuate the boundary change. That would be the last step in the process procedurally. So sometime, if, between now and then, we would hope to be able to answer those questions. This is what's going to happen. But then the wheels would already be in motion in a sense.
Yeah, that's the part I'm uncomfortable with.
But, but we write ordinances, so couldn't part of the ordinance say they don't get a tax bill?
Not necessarily. We don't get to control that necessarily.
Why are we even here?
Yeah.
We have, what do we do? Yes, Corey?
Is there any way that we could say that we would refund any taxes that were paid?
I, I, I just don't want this to get hung up because folks are afraid they're paid. I mean, to me, that's ridiculous. I have no interest in taxing them. I just want to fix the road.
And I'm careful about not trying to, which is a good, good point, of what, what happened back then. You know, I don't know if the laws changed. And I, so that's why I was saying, Matt, I just don't remember what happened. But, but it is true, they did get tax bills and they, they didn't get taxed on them. Again, I, I don't...
And, and I, I would also say, I don't know how, how easy it's gonna be for us to figure out exactly what's gonna happen. And, and the, the discussion we've had so far with the Dane County Property Lister was, oh, please don't do that. They would rather we not do this because it's a pain in the neck for them. So, you know, but they don't get to necessarily, they don't get to veto this if, if we decide to do it.
And, and so the, so the question is, and this is what Matt and I debated before the, you know, two weeks ago, is do we, again, do we spend legal money and time doing this and anticipating that the, the town is going to approve it? Or do we wait for the town to show that they're gonna move towards approving it before we do that? So that's, that, that's why it's, that's important to say.
So when, when are we gonna, when are we gonna get these answers?
Which answers?
The tax stuff, the...
I don't know. First of all, I have to be asked to get you the answers. And right now, I've been, I'm on hold.
See, this is the part that makes me uncomfortable.
So anytime we ask Matt to do something, comes the big bill.
Yeah, but this is, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
You're asking me to approve something that, what, that's got questions hanging out there.
I get that. Yeah, Corey?
I'm guessing that the taxes for this, for an easement of right of way would be quite small. And maybe we're making more of this than what it is? I'm, my question is, for the town residents that we have here, is this a concern of yours?
I suspect it would be for Tom Boogless. Unless he fight a tooth and nail. I wouldn't. That's pretty small, but he's the main, he owns the core.
Well, and, and here's another thought, you know, and this may be a bad idea, I don't know. But you could wait for the town, say, why don't you guys go first? Your residents, who are concerned about this issue, you know, they can figure this out too. I mean, they, I think the town was interested in having this agreement approved.
Which was moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, you know, maybe they should... I think the village has spent all of the money required to move this forward to date. I know the town is interested in Mr. Boogless not receiving a tax bill. Their attorney told me that. You know, I mean, we could say to them, you guys figure it out. If you don't want to do it, let us know. And we'll fix the road in 2026, and then you'll plow the south half and we'll plow the north half. And that would be, but that's not how this has gone so far. The village has really said, taken a lead role and invested in having your Public Works Director and your attorney kind of figure out how to do this, put all this together. We spent all the money on it. Now, if you want to spend the money on the next piece, which is, let's figure out how the Dane County Property Lister's gonna deal with it and how your assessor's gonna deal with it, you know, we can do that too. But it would be nice if the town would spend a little, I mean, it's time and effort figuring some of this out.
I'm gonna turn to Jerry before the town recalls.
Right.
Yes, Jerry.
No, I, Mike, how long, how many years have we been working on this?
Well, this would, this got brought up when someone from the Bergamot Development was complaining about not being able to, to ride, to ride his bike on...
Yeah, my point is, this has been...
We had gotten some, some complaints from Bergamot residents.
Two years, Jerry.
Yeah.
Well, well, but, but actually, this, but this is, this goes back even further than that.
So this has been in process for a long time.
Yeah.
And there have been meetings that the town has been involved with, with staff, in which they've showed interest in moving this forward. In the meantime, Lincoln Road is degrading quickly. And I think the quicker this continues to move forward, the quicker we get that road repaired. Now, I think we, at some point, we just have to trust that the township will move it forward once we get it back to them. I, I, I know a couple of the Town Board members are back there tonight, three of them. And the, I guess I, my recommendation would be to approve this agreement as is. Trust that Matt has told us the correct information, that we'll let the Town Board then approve it, and then we can come back and answer the questions that we're all concerned about. And to pacify the, the village residents that they, well, I shouldn't say pacify, that there will be a solution regarding the taxes.
Reassure.
Reassure.
There may be.
Right.
There may, they may get a tax bill. Again, I don't think, if they, if, if they get one, I, I agree with the notion that, I can't imagine it would be very much, you know, what's the value of a piece of a public right of way?
Well, I think, I think that's an issue we have to, we have to address when we get to that point.
Yeah.
For tonight. It's on our agenda. There's a recommended motion. I'd urge everyone just to, to support that and to vote for it. And then let staff take over, let the Town Board take over and, and move it forward on their end. And then we can come back and we can deal with finalizing that agreement.
Are you making that motion?
I would be happy to.
Well, I think that's...
Hang on, I gotta, I have to...
We're still in the public hearing.
Yeah, we're still in the public hearing, but I'll let you do that in a minute.
Oh, I was trying to get you to close it.
I know. I'm, I'm, there's a process, dude. Did I see somebody's handbook there?
Yes, so you're, you're, you're looking to repair, you're doing repairs.
So, so bad, bad news. I need you to come up here. Sorry.
You're looking to do...
But first, could you tell us, tell us who you are and where you live?
I'm Greg Pittman, Amy's husband, ninety-three Lincoln Road, Oregon.
Thank you.
I'm kind of that little section right there...
Gotcha.
Where you're looking to develop or make the changes. I'm all for the shoulder fix. I don't know where sixty feet runs from the curb over to where you're talking, or sixty whatever feet that is. But you need something right there. It's crumbling bad. But, you know, that's no big deal. I mean, I can deal with my lawnmower blades and all that stuff and shooting pebbles and rocks at people's cars. The problem is beyond it. It's crowned. I mean, we're not, we're talking about after Bergamot, from Bergamot to Union, big whoop. It's no big deal. But beyond that, my wife goes to work every day. It's crowned and ice, snow. Now, you guys do a fine down plowing, salting in spots. That's great. Me personally, I wouldn't take that road. It's crumbling down to, you can't even pass barely. So what are you guys doing? Are you guys talking about that spot? Or are you guys just talking about this Union to Bergamot?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
So, so the village would, we would, we would fix the road from Union west to Glenway. Then the town would go from Glenway, approximately from Glenway out to County D.
Oh, so that, that is your plan?
Correct.
Right.
We're referring to the small little section for now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, so we would, we would give them the $200,000. They would fix their piece and we would fix our piece at the same time. Hopefully, maybe use the same contractor, possibly.
There you go.
What a concept.
That's a good, good thing.
All right, thank you, sir.
And this will all be brought up at the, at a town meeting in the future. So if you have more input, you'll be able to give it to your town board, so...
And thank you to the Town Board members for being here. We should find out when your meeting is and come support you. All right, Corey, yes?
I think everybody wants to see the road get fixed. And I, I, you know, I really want to make sure and set everyone at ease at the same time that we're gonna do things right and we're gonna listen to people and get the answers that we need. For the purposes of, I think, moving this forward, I, I do agree with Jerry that, you know, we can approve this tonight. And if the town has their meeting and they have concerns, they can bring them back to us. And we can add things or change things however we need to. But I think it's probably important for us to keep this moving forward tonight. And we can deal with any, anything, any unknowns or any concerns that come up in subsequent meetings.
I agree. Yeah, Randy?
So, Jerry, you convinced me. Give me a little, no. I, I want to see the road fixed. And I, I, I know that we will do the right thing. I just want to make, just want to make sure that those, those, those questions get answered somewhere along the way, that's, that we make sure that we do that. So I, I'm okay. Okay, so I'm gonna make that motion.
All right, so let me close the hearing first. Sorry.
Oh, come on.
I know, it's like there's a list. Okay, is anyone else who want to talk before I close the hearing? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, now, would you like to make a motion, Jerry?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Resolution nineteen dash twenty-four, which is the approving an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Oregon and the town of Oregon related to Lincoln Road.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any last discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion, I mean, any nays. I'm not nay-ing it, for God's sake. Motion carries.
Roll that.
So town folks, could you let us know when you schedule your hearing? And if you'd like anybody from the village there, we'd be happy to attend. Or if it's easier, if we don't attend, let us know that. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your input and want to fix the road.
Thank you for closing the public hearing.
All right, moving on to more exciting options like dumpsters. Anybody still want to listen about dumpsters? Uh-huh. All right.
I think I'll leave now.
I had a four A, so we're on to the Village Attorney, Village Administrator report. Thank you, gentlemen.
When did you sneak in?
We have a discussion of possible action regarding a 2019 dumpster agreement with Sam Kososki, Dave Heidi, and Bridget Ace and the village of Oregon, who have recommended a motion to approve the agreement We have a recommended motion to approve the agreement and thank Bridget Ace for coordinating the dumpster agreements, including having the 2019 agreement signed. Would someone like to make that motion? Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Bridget?
Yes.
Yes, okay, anything that you want to say? Do a cartwheel, or?
Yeah, that would be great. It was kind of a long haul, but, um, got one down, and I'm sure there'll be a couple more in the future, so. Kind of good experience for me, it's the first time I've ever been through an event like that. But I would say it could've been worse, right? So, one thing off the checklist, and we're on to the next thing, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Without her, we, this never would be here, so.
So, thank you, Bridget, because you, you're making our lives easier.
Hopefully, and you're making mine, too.
Yeah.
So, Bridget, thanks for stepping up.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Of course, absolutely.
Thanks for calling it a good experience so far.
I guess it could've been worse.
All right, pending any other discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, thank you. Item B, we have a discussion of possible action regarding Task Order 2019-04 for Rookert and Milky for preparing the Dane County Conservation Grant, Fund Grant for Acquisition of Property for the Rotary Bike Trail. So, we have a recommended motion to approve this task order in the amount of $2,538. Is anyone interested in making this motion to get on the table? It's Randy?
I move.
Okay, and seconded by?
I'll second.
Jeff, yep, okay. Mike, do you want to walk us through this?
Yes, so, um, so the village applied for a state stewardship grant to help with the acquisition of the easement, which is coming up here. And then this, this would be the county grant that we would apply for, for the acquisition. And then we also have applied for a grant to actually help pay for the repair of the trail, so.
Grants are good.
Awesome.
I'm all in favor of grants.
Are these matching grants, I'm sorry?
Yes, yep, there's matching in, in most of these things, yep.
Okay.
Like, the, we, stewardship's 50, 30 per, 50, 30% state, 30% to the village.
Okay, so, so once we approve this tonight, if it's granted, then we are going to be paying money for, to match.
The village borrowed $300,000 for the, to do the trail. So, we've been using some of that money to acquire the, the property.
Oh, okay, so we already borrowed that, didn't we? Yeah, okay, I forgot.
Yep.
Yeah, Cory.
Do we have any sense of what the grant, uh, dollar amount that we would be requesting would be?
Um, not at this point, we did, we did request, excuse me, we did request 75% of the, the, the payment for fixing the trail. We asked for $260,000. But, um, thi, this one's, this one doesn't have as many guidelines as the other one, so. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly, probably at least 50%, to be honest with you.
Do we need Jerry to vote? Are we okay with that?
We have four.
We still have four.
I think we're good.
All right, okay. So, we have a motion to approve the task order, uh, for to, um, I'm assuming this is to write the grant? Is that what this is for?
I'm sorry.
They're going to write the grant for us?
Correct.
Yes, okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continuing with bike trail, uh, item C is discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 1926. This is a Dane County Conservation Fund Grant for Acquisition of Property for the Rotary Bike Trail. So, our recommended motion is to approve this resolution requesting a Dane County Conservation Fund Grant.
I'll move, Jeannie.
All right.
Second.
Second, all right, Mike?
And thi, this is part of what you just approved, it's part of the grant process, we have to have you approve this.
Gotcha. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, last on the bike trail, so we have a discussion of possible action regarding purchase and sale of right-of-way easement between the Keller Revocable Trust and the Village of Oregon for the Rotary Bike Trail. We have a motion to approve the purchase and sale of, sale of right-of-way easement.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
I'll second.
All right. Mike, you want to walk us through this?
Sure, so, um, first, I want to thank the Keller family for, for doing this with us. This was in closed session a few times, and, uh, the board directed staff to, you know, complete the deal, and as we did, and they were, they're very cooperative in some of the concerns we had, and we tried to address some of the concerns they had. And if you look on page two, I actually have it up on the screen there, um, we are paying $100,000 for the easement, and this would be the, the big part of the trail that's underwater right now, would be moving it south, obviously, to a higher elevation. And, um, there are some other, um, we have to stake out the trail for them to look at, right, Matt, before the, the, the closing can happen, things like that. They're asking for simple things like, which is no big deal, about, um, having garbage cans along the trail when it's built, and things like that. If we ever, ever want to have, uh, lights installed, they would, they'd have to be embedded in the, uh, pavement, like they have along the Capital City Trail in, in Pittsburgh and things like that. But basically, it's a pretty clean, pretty clean document, Matt, do you agree? And, I mean, basically, it's under $100,000, and we have to make sure that they're comfortable with the, uh, the location of the trail that's going to be staked out.
Right, they have the right, we, we have to delineate the final location, and they have the right to approve that. If they don't approve of it, then, you know, we don't close unless we reach an agreement on the final delineation.
Can you remind me how long that, that stretch is that we're buying the easement for?
And you're going to ask me that.
Sorry, well, I mean, even like ballpark, like quarter mile? Is it shorter or longer than a quarter mile?
I said the quarter mile, yeah, maybe, maybe a little bit shorter than that.
There is a nice exhibit, I think, on there, maybe showing, can you keep going, Mike, you can see the location.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah, I'm looking at the map now, I just, I'm, I'm not good at ballparking.
I'm not sure either what the distance is.
So, I mean.
I'll get that answer for you.
So, thank you to the Keller family for willing to work with us.
Yes.
Um, and I'm in favor of this, my, my ongoing concern is, does this part get flooded too?
So, I've asked Jeff for all that probably a half a dozen times, because obviously, when we did the initial trail, I told Mark, I said, Mark, that here is the best part about this project, we're going to put the trail in, and we're not going to have to talk about it for 10, 10 to 15 years until we redo some, some crack ceiling.
Nice snort there, Matt. Yeah.
So, I have really asked Jeff numerous times, Jeff, are you, are you convinced we're out of the flood area? You know, and he's, he's made a, you know, point that, um, it could flood, but then that means we're also flooding Netherwood, the road, I mean, you know, on an extreme, extreme weather event. But, um, he is convinced that we are above the, the flood elevation, yeah.
Jeff, yeah?
Yeah, so I was equally concerned as Jeannie that we've got this right this time, before we spend $100,000 on it. And, uh, I, I think when we talked to Jeff, that we've got three feet of elevation over the existing path, if, if I remember right. I have, I have no problem at all with the agreement that has been arrived at between the Keller family and the village. But I think at the very least, I'd be in favor of raising the bed, um, when we do the installation of the bike path, and that might be something that the Keller family has to weigh in on. Um, we could take dirt from, uh, the old, the old, uh, walking loop there, all the, that mounted up dirt that's been there, that we've been trying to get rid of. That's one place we could take dirt from, but I, I don't think three feet's enough, unless the, unless the city of Pittsburgh's got a plan to drain Lake Barney.
That's a ironic thing to say. Okay, Cory, Cory, I'm just, um, I'm, I'm not here, I'm not qualified to respond to that, that's, that's more of a Jeff Raul, uh, Jeff, uh, point. I, I can just tell you that I've quizzed him numerous times, uh, I, I, as you can see, the route here is going to the trees. I actually wanted it, I'm concerned, I actually wanted it to actually go outside the trees and get it as high and far away as the water from, as possible, but the, they, they selected a different route. But Jeff's, Jeff's convinced me that, you know, he's, he's, he thinks it's above the flood elevation. And he's, he's saying that's based on, last year, when we, when we removed that, the bike path, that, uh, where the water now, when you're out there, you know, that's running out of Lake Barney, onto Alpine Dairies property, I don't know if you've been out there. So, he's convinced that, um, he's done all that calculation to figure out, with Rookie and Milky's assistance, that this is where the, the trail should go.
Yeah, I, I looked at it from a cursory perspective, I, I didn't dig into it a ton, but I think if this location of the trail floods, we have much bigger problems in the village.
And as Jeff said, yeah.
Those bigger problems are coming, I'm afraid, Cory. I, I, this is tip of the iceberg, this, this isn't 20 years from now, 30 years from now, I didn't mean to not raise my hand and say something, but. I agree with you, we do have much bigger problems, and I think that we've talked about, we've talked about restoring the, the groundwater flow to where it was 100 years ago, 125 years ago, before all this farmland was reclaimed, um, when it dried out. And we don't, we just don't have pictures from 1850 that can show us how much of this was wetland back then, and how much of it's been reclaimed farmland, and, uh, so I'm, I'm with you, I'm in your camp, 100%. I just think that we are going to have real problems.
Jerry, Jim.
I think my questions have been answered, I, I share the same concerns that I'm hearing from everybody else, so. It, uh, but we only have two choices, to either table this or to act on it, so.
Well, I think, I think we have a third choice, and, and I think, for, for me, we could act on it. Clearly, this is what the Kellers are willing to do for us, and I think it's very generous of them.
Very generous, I agree too.
But when we, when it comes to engineering the path, we have the ability to engineer a raised elevation, I would think, and bring it up another two, three feet, and give us six feet.
Um, so, I believe that we would have that right under the terms of the easement that we're, that we're acquiring. That we, you know, we can construct the path, and if constructing the path means, you know, we're, we're making some modifications within the easement, now, there, I suppose there would be some limit to that, if, if we need to, if we're changing the grade so much that we're now extending outside the width of the easement, probably can't do that. But as long as we're operating within the easement, I think we can, we can bring in some fill, we can build in the sub base.
If, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
If the board approves this tonight, then I'll, what I'll do at the next board meeting, Jeff was, I'll, you know, and Jeff apologized for not being here, that he forgot he had something to do with his, his daughter. But, um, I, I'll have Jeff come and go through the explanation how he's explained it to me numerous times.
Well, he, he showed us elevation maps, I think during closed session, he showed us elevation maps. Just that I don't know how to read elevation maps, and I just don't want to keep spending money on a trail that floods.
Yeah, I, I agree completely.
But, so if we, so let's say we get these grants, um, are we thinking these grants, how much, if, let's say we get the grants, any ballpark of how much the grants would, total cost to reconstructing the trail would be?
So, what I'm going to do, I thought this when I was on vacation, we did this last time, I'm, I'm going to ask Jeff to put together a spreadsheet that shows what we spent so far in engineering costs, and then, and then maybe do some projections if we got the grant, what it would cost us. And then, that, because I think that people are going to want to know what we, what it costs to fix the trail, yeah, so we'll, we'll do that.
I mean, I know that we're committed to the $300,000, because we passed that last year, and it's in the budget. Um, I don't know how much beyond that I'm willing to go.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I share that sentiment.
But then again, it also sucks to have a path that isn't, can't be used to go all the way through, like it was. I mean, the other option is, you know, we build like a, a wildlife viewing stand at one end, right? It's no longer a bike path, it's a path to a wildlife viewing station, and that was a really expensive thing to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I mean, our options here are limited, we have a path to nowhere, or we fix the path.
And Lake Barney is, I mean, I, I rode my bike out there yesterday, because I, I, I don't think it rained here a lot last week, so I thought, I wanted to, I'm always keep, Jeff and I are curious how much water's running out of Lake Barney, and this is probably the lowest since, since we removed that piece of the trail. It's still, it's still running out, it's just amazing how much water.
Water's coming up.
Yeah.
From under.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, are we ready to vote? All right, so we have a motion to approve the purchase and the sale of right-of-way, right-of-way easement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for that.
And again, thank you to the Keller family for working with us to make that happen, because otherwise, we would have no options.
Yeah.
We'd be stuck, yeah.
Okay, so we have approval of minutes from July 15th, 2019. Any motion on that? Motion, any of you second?
I'll second.
All right, any input, otherwise all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have, um, vouchers tonight, just lost my tab. Peggy, can you help me? Get my tab back. Technical difficulties. My husband's literally rolling his eyes at it.
You want, Jeannie, you want this?
All right, no, back in motion, thank you. All right, I just need to read the voucher number. All right, so we have vouchers before us tonight, in the amount of $737,124.30. Um, so I need a motion to approve to get this on the table.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, questions?
Who are we going to ask these questions to, Mike?
Well, it is very holy, Jerry. I'm going to do triple duty here tonight, so, all right, go ahead, I'm ready. Give me the vendor name, please.
No problem, anything you need, Mike. The 6045 Nina Foundry Company. What is that?
What's the number, Jerry?
It's 6045.
Oh.
6045.
Oh, is that what it is?
I'm sorry.
They make like manhole castings.
Sidewalk and storm super warning, yep.
Okay, so it says sidewalk detectable warning, you know, it was the description.
Yep.
So, those are manhole?
They're, they're an iron company, they make those plates that you put in the sidewalks, so.
Right, 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 right.
That's right, they're, that's right, they're famous up there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Keep going, Jerry, I'm ready for you.
Cory can pinch hit, probably has public worth.
What do we do with Ross bumpers? 7260, what's, do we repair bumpers on all the vehicles?
It's like a bunch of dump trucks.
Looks like we did.
It looked like it, yep.
Cory?
So, so is Jeff running into a bunch of stuff, is that the problem, like they're driving around?
Yeah.
Running into things?
I'm finding that.
They do wel, it's a custom welding, so they are doing welding to a bunch of different vehicles.
Yeah.
Huh, I can't.
But it's kind of like Jeff for stuff when he's not. It's not like he doesn't give us a hard time.
Sorry, that one I can't, I can't figure out really this year.
Okay, we'll move on.
Okay, sorry, Jerry.
9270 Wisconsin Natural Resources Sewer 2019 Environmental Fees, $9,400.
Probably for the treatment plant.
Treatment plant?
Yeah, this would be a treatment plant.
Yep, that would make sense, that would make sense. 9753 Bear Insurance Workers' Comp First Quarterly Payment.
Yep.
Our workers' comp insurance is $54,000 a quarter? That sounds steep.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that's.
Well, the workers' comp is $35,000.
Oh, that's like.
And the rest of that is liability. And yes, workers' comp insurance, is that expensive?
It is that expensive, okay, how often do we bid that service out?
We haven't done that in a while, have we? I can't think of that now.
Well.
Well, this is, we, we get, this is the insurance we get through the league, yeah, it's been, it's pretty, it's been pretty competitive.
Okay.
Yeah, it's crazy how expensive that is.
All right, and then.
It's more expensive not to have it, though.
This is true, also, you're required by law to have it, hence why all businesses have it.
That's all my questions, I won't torture you anymore, Mike.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mike? All right, otherwise, we'll do, we'll call for approval. Okay, Pudrow?
Yes.
Glash?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Folic?
Yes.
Um, just a point of order, did we do, uh, vote on the minutes, did we approve the minutes?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have a vote on that?
Um, I kind of have it pre-in.
Yeah, we're good. Should we vote on it just in case? Sure. All in favor?
That makes everybody feel.
She has a first and a second, all those in favor of the July 15th minutes?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Jeff, for covering just in case. All right, so community input, number seven, is there anyone here that would like to speak to us about anything that's not on the agenda? Look at them run to the front. Moving to eight, talk emissions announcements, I think we have some board comments.
So, I have the, uh, and Jennifer knows this already, I have the pleasure of telling everybody that on Saturday, OCRN received a $500,000 check for the new library.
Can you talk, is it, talk about the donor, or no?
Anonymous donor.
Okay.
Thank you, anonymous.
I have the check too, by the way, not on me, but I have it, I have it hidden at my house, just in case.
That is excellent, that's great news, very, very good. Other board comments?[1759.43]
Well, how do you follow that?
I know, right?
Maybe Jennifer would like to say something about that.
We are just really excited, um, that's a great way to start our campaign and get our campaign moving forward, um, one more step closer to new library, we're also very grateful to that person, whoever he or she may be. That's an amazing, amazing gesture and hopefully other people will be as amazing and help this project move forward, so, thank you.
Yeah, Jerry.
As long as we're on the subject, how is the fundraising going, Jennifer? Do you have a little overview of how the progress is ma-, is going on, on fundraising?
I think it's pretty good, Jerry.
Well, I mean, before, with that, I would agree with you.
We're, we're a little bit behind schedule with having plans available because we, um, we were trying to make sure we were moving the right plans forward and so we spent a lot of time on talking to neighbors about the site and making sure we understood issues and really heard and addressed those issues. So we were hoping to have plans in June or July, now it's August and we're still refining those plans, so there was a little bit of a delay there. And everybody wants to know what it looks like, um, you know, when you're asking people to support and get excited about it, that's a really important piece. And so we're hoping to present plans at the Joint Library Board and Village Board meeting in two weeks, so really excited to be able to have those. Um, we do have a great, um, campaign cabinet of over forty community members who are working very hard, um, to help our project move forward. We have, um, a lot of materials, we have a campaign website that's been established, we have a lot of, a lot of things in the works and so we're, I think we're kind of at this, this, this gift is really just an exciting place to kind of move us forward with a lot of momentum and having those plans, um, very soon will be really a nice time to move forward with those as well. Um, we've had a lot of our campaign committee, myself included, have made gifts ourselves, so we welcome, if any of you wanna get involved and support the cause, I'd be happy to talk to you about that, um, a lot of our steering committee members, um, have made gifts as well, so we're really getting a lot of people closest to the project, um, engaged as well and we're hoping it's just gonna take off from here.
I'm concerned about how it's gonna look, but I'm sure it'll be all right, I'm more concerned about how it's gonna get paid for.
Me too, we share that concern, Jerry.
Well, if you want to see how it's gonna look, the first conceptual plans are coming before the planning commission on Thursday night.
Thursday night, okay.
Yep, the first conceptual plans.
Um, we're having meetings, the, the building committee meets tomorrow, the library board meets on Wednesday, so we're gonna have a lot of, um, a lot of feedback on that. Um, I will just note that Wanaki opened their new library last Thursday, they estimate over thirteen hundred people came through their new library on its opening day, um, and there was just really positive reception, their village administrator spoke at the opening, um, they just had really good reception at that, um, event, so hopefully, hopefully we'll have that same, um, success here.
How many square feet is their library gonna be?
Um, thirty-nine to forty thousand, they said forty in their speeches, but I think I've seen thirty-nine thousand in, in the papers and things, so.
Very good, thank you.
Excellent, any other board comments? All right, then we'll go to staff comments, I'll just read a couple of things here and then open it up. So I just, a reminder to the public that September fourth is a deadline for applications for an open village trustee position, and we will be interviewing applicants at the September ninth meeting, so if you apply, please also put that September ninth meeting on your calendar, uh, 'cause we will have you come and meet all of us and I don't know if we'll ask questions, but you get to tell us a little bit about yourself. Mike, stupid question, but we'll see the applications, like they'll be in the packet, we'll see them before that night, right?
Yeah, and people that are sending it to me, I'm, I'm saying thank you for the application and saying that they should make sure they're at the, the meeting on the night.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a chance to review them before, like it won't just be, we'll see them for the, okay.
Nope, they'll be in the packet.
Okay, good, I think that would be helpful, I think, to everybody. Um, we have a bunch of upcoming meetings, including all of the budget meetings, Jerry, are all these budget meetings on your calendar?
Yes.
Not to put you on the spot, but sometimes we, yes, okay, are all the budget meetings on everyone else's calendar except for Jeff, who won't be here? All right, sorry.
Welcome to come, welcome to come, though.
Yes, Jeff, you should, you should just sit in the audience and.
Cheer?
Never mind, no, no chirping, no chirping, audience. Any other staff comments? Okay, communication and miscellaneous business, we have, um, item nine A, discussion on possible action regarding a memorandum of understanding, Wisconsin Automated License Plate Reader Association concerning data sharing and time system agency agreement. Um, so we recommend motion to approve the MOU and the agreement.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Jenny, anything you wanna tell us on this?
So, right now, we're working with Pittsburgh Police, um, and their group of departments, uh, sharing information through our LPR system. This would allow for that group to expand into the Milwaukee area, um, and would really help us in identifying, uh, vehicles we need to know about in our area as well as entering information of vehicles we're looking for that may end up in their area.
Have you had any comments, 'cause I've had comments from the public that they think this is an invasion of their privacy?
I have not.
How do we respond to those comments?
So, there's, I guess a couple of responses you could give, but, um, it really what, for using this and entering information in, and I give you an example would be, um, which happens unfortunately, commonly is a woman with dementia, gets in a vehicle she's not supposed to be driving and takes off, this LPR is just constantly running plates, so the chances of that LPR finding that vehicle, whether it's in Milwaukee under this MOU or in Pittsburgh, the chances are significantly greater. We don't look through that data on a daily basis or anything like that, this is more for us or any other agency that's looking for vehicles for specific reasons and helping identify those vehicles. Uh, other re-, other purposes for the system is if a, um, the vehicle stolen, um, if there's a safety risk for that vehicle, it'll notify that officer right away so that if they make a traffic stop on that vehicle, they have the necessary resources to make the safest approach. Just a lot of good purposes and we're not reviewing this data on a daily basis, so.
Does anybody else got that feedback from folks? So, the answer is that it's, it's better for the greater good.
Right, and it's, we are not, uh, using it just on a whim, it's for good purposes.
All right, yeah, Jerry?
Is there a cost attached to that technology?
Um, not additional with this new MOU, this is just a bigger safety net.
All right, thank you.
All right, no other questions, all in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you lieutenant. Uh, item B, the discussion of possible action regarding school resource officer agreement between the Oregon School District and the Village of Oregon. So in front of us, we have a couple emails from the board members that couldn't be here tonight and both of those board members are asking us to table this until next week's, um, personnel meeting. So I guess, um, if it's all right with Mike, I would like to honor those requests, especially since Jenna is the chair of the Personnel Committee, unless anyone else has objections to that?
No objection, but just a, a note that that was not listed as one of the upcoming meetings.
Right, because I, I wanted to know what the board wanted to do then or not, yep.
Tell, remind me, remind us who's on the Personnel Committee?
Right.
Myself, Jenna and Randy.
Can you guys both come to a meeting next Monday night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
At five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Yep.
Obviously, everyone is invited to attend, lots of good discussion happens at those meetings. All right.
So, so Matt, should, does the board technically have to table the item and send it to the committee or, or is it just a consensus just to do it?
Uh, that's fine, there's actually no motion been made, so, um, I suppose if we were really following procedure, there would have been a motion to approve and then that would have been tabled, but, um, if, if there's a consensus to simply not take any action on it and let it go to the committee meeting, I think that's fine.
Okay.
It's gonna come back to the board, um, before it gets approved anyway, so.
You have to.
Yeah, of course.
Is there any time sensitivity with this being in place for the school year or something like that?
So Mike and I talked about that a little bit, so yes and no, yes, the goal is to have an officer in the school on the first day of school, first day of school, obviously. And, uh, Mike reminded me that we operated for, what, twenty years without an MOU with us, with an officer in the school?
Yeah.
So it has been done, um, and just to update the, the board, we have been working with the school on the MOU. You may remember that, um, the chief has concerns with that, so we were trying to address them those concerns with the, the school officials. And things slowed down this summer and so we're still, we're still in that negotiation point and there's, I don't think there's any way we'll get an MOU negotiate before this, there's no, there's no way, let me just say that. So either our options are to approve the existing one and not be happy about that or just to have some sort of bare bones legal agreement covering liability and costs and then start from scratch.
I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I, I'm sure those are the things that we will be discussing in the Personnel Committee, right?
And I'm gonna, I know Dr., I think it's Dr. Bosser's first day back from vacation, so I'm not sure, but I'm gonna try to get him to come to the committee meeting if he can do it, I think that'd be helpful. But there, yeah, there is a little bit of time sensitivity because, uh, between now and September third, we only have one more meeting, uh, sorry, one more board meeting.
But I think the overarching goal of everyone, I mean, not even the goal, the expectation is that there will be an officer in school at day one.
Yep.
We will do whatever it has to do to make that happen, 'cause everybody seems, I mean, the police department wants that, the school board wants that, we want that.
And Jenny's right, for many, many years, um, all we really had was just a, I, I guess it was just a written agreement that the department would place an officer in the school for seven hundred, eight hundred hours, whatever it is for the school year and they would, they would pay us for that officer, that was basically the agreement we had, it went on for many, many years that way.
So is that still in place or is that expired?
This is, this is the second or third agreement of, of this kind we've had with the school district, the more, the more formal one.
Right, so for many years, it was just a one paragraph, officer in the school for X hours, school pay X dollars, very short. That was replaced by a, the kind of agreement that was in place for the last several years, I don't know when that happened.
Yeah.
But there's this more extensive agreement now and the one that's in front of you tonight is basically the same one we had last year and the thought was.
Basic, essentially it is.
Yeah, basically with maybe some date, cha-, changing of the dates. One thought was, just get that agreement approved and then continue the discussion with the school district, but there's no desire to, you know, have the committee continue to discuss this before the board takes action.
I guess, I wanna get the agreement right, so if we have time to do that, great, but it sounds like even if, if it came back to that next board meeting, we could approve this or some other form of an agreement to make sure that an officer is in place at the beginning of the school year, so.
Yeah, it, I'm sure that's the goal.
Yep.
Yeah, Jeff?
It, it might be helpful to think about how you would wanna shuffle the committees once I'm gone, because the time that I spend there is gonna, that the information I get and the input I give is gonna disappear.
Right.
Within a week.
Okay, that's a good point, thank you.
And I do think that there, um, we've talked, we've had some pretty good conversations about that MOU and, and there's a couple of, um, gaps that need to be closed.
Oh, yeah.
And we can't just continue business as usual, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah.
Like, especially in light of the, you know, the current state of things and, and as we've seen this morning, they're not getting better, they're getting worse.
All right, so we won't take any action on that, maybe Monday, Monday night?
Yep.
All right. So item C, uh, discussion of possible action regarding neighbors by Ring Memorandum of Understanding between Ring LLC and the Oregon Police Department, recommend motion to approve the MOU. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion for discussion.
I'll second.
All right, lieutenant, wanna tell us about this?
Yes, so, um, the Ring Doorbell Camera System that they have out there.
Yeah.
Actually, I was a customer of this recently, um, with our residents, we used to have the Ring, so I still have the app on my phone and suddenly a message popped up on my personal phone that I had video I could view, there it was, someone that lived completely across town wanted to share this video and let me know that this, these, stuff from models were occurring, this is exactly what these people look like. So, this neighbors by Ring is exactly what had happened, is it's a portal where I, as the owner of the video that was just caught on my resident's camera, I can share it with whoever I want, I can click with any other Ring customers or in this particular situation with this MOU, I can share it with the police department. Right now, how we get video from residents is either we go out and we copy onto a thumb drive or they might email it to us, sometimes there's challenges with that, uh, sometimes there has to be an app or an application that comes with the, the actual recording so we can play it later, uh, this way, it's cleaner, they can just share it right from their desk and get it right to us.
That's pretty cool.
I think it's like an interesting kind of a neighborhood watch thing.
Yes.
How do I do it?
Yes, it is great, um, I, I was surprised somebody shared it with me and I didn't even know this person, they gave me their address, what had happened and now we're aware that this is going on in our town, so.
Do you have any, um, how do we let people know this exists?
Uh, we could do a lot of, uh, PR with it on our Facebook account, that seems to, usually those are the people that are already kind of tech savvy, so they can grab out this information, um, we, we find that a lot of people do have the Ring product as well.
Okay.
We can ask Candy to do a email notification to.
Oh, nice.
Have a lot of people on there.
Okay. All right, pending no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the Ring MOU, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item D, discussion on possible action regarding authorizing public works director to contract with mobile reduction specialists for semi-annual grinding and hauling of the Village of Oregon brush pile. Do we want to talk about this motion or do you want us to give some information first?
So I, yeah, if I can just, so I talked to, uh, to Jeff this afternoon about this, I hadn't seen this before, I went on vacation and, and he, he's trying to get going on grinding the, the pile down at the, at the yard race cycle, 'cause it's pretty large, I don't know if you've seen it. And so I, I talked to Jerry about this morning, about Jerry expressed some concerns about the cost when, where we're going with this and so here, here's a, for a better term, a compromise, rather than doing a, a three-year contract is, is that, um, we, we do a one-year contract with this company so we can get going on it and get on, get on this guy's schedule, particularly probably for September and try to get the pile out of there before, you know, the season begins in the fall. And then, and then maybe spend, you know, during the budget time or whatever, we can be talking about what to do with the yard, this, yard race site and I explained to Jerry that Mark Beal and I have, had, had talked about this numerous times over the years about what to do with it, because there's an expense, particularly after we stopped burning, of having to, uh, you know, chip the, uh, the wood through the tug grinder and haul it out and everything, and what Jeff's proposing is trying to save some of our staff time by paying the contractor who has, who has a larger truck to, to haul it. And, um, but rather than, rather than delaying that and, and, um, and trying to figure out what to do for the next three years, Jeff's suggesting just give them authority to get a contract ready for the next board agenda just to take care of nineteen and then we, the board can have a more in-depth discussion about what to do after this year with the pile. And I will tell you, there are no easy answers and one of the suggestions Jerry had is that we could see what other communities are doing around us like Pittsburgh and McFarland, but everyone has the same struggle what to do with it.
I'll tell you, though, it's real, um, to be able to offer that service to our residents is huge, instead of telling them they gotta go to the Dane County Dump and figure out how to pay for it there, so, you know, I think if you were gonna bring taxpayers in the room and ask them if they'd be in favor of, of finding a solution locally, they'd be in favor of it, even whatever the expense might be.
Yeah, of course, thanks, Jeff.
Is it a possibility to have the one year with the option to extend up to three years in case we do like this option?
Yeah, I, that's a good idea, yep.
And then my read of this, I think it's actually quite affordable from what we were doing in Pittsburgh, we were tub grinding and disposing on-site and it was significantly more than this, if they're hauling material and grinding, it, to me, this seems like a very good value for our residents.
So Corey, where is it like, so after they grind it, what do they do with it, what does this company do with it?
Beneficial reuse of some sort, um, there's some of it that gets reused for compost, some of it gets reused as mulch, some of it can even get put in a digester to create energy, so there's all different kinds of uses for it. The problem is, is the trucking is so expensive that it doesn't really pay a lot to do it, that's why you end up paying to haul it, so.
So in the old days, I'm sure we just burned this, right? And then there was this giant plume of black smoke that covered the village?
For many days, it would, it would stew down there for days, yeah.
I, I think those days have passed, I, I don't think our residents would probably put up with that and also that's not environmentally, uh, best. But I, I know that someone's gonna ask me this question of, well, why don't you just burn it? Like, my dad, my dad would ask me that, you know? We are beyond that, I think, in this day and age, but it's, so it's good to know, but that actually goes back to being reused and is a benefit to the earth.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, Jerry?
So Pittsburgh doesn't have a, a vendor that would, that hauls that?
So Pittsburgh for their, you know, woody products, they do a tub grind and then they provide wood chips to residents.
Okay.
And then compost, they actually have their own compost facility which is permitted through the DNR for, um, creating compost and even getting rid of that, some residents will take some of it, but, um, you know, getting people to take that is difficult. There's also the, the jumping worm, which is a huge issue too.
There's a jumping worm?
If that gets in your compost, you, it's, it's of no use. Uh, they, they move around a lot, but they basically eat all the organic out of it and then it's totally useless.
Such valuable information.
Yeah, so.
So, so Mike, your preference is for us to actually do this motion tonight?
I, it, it gives Jeff the ability to. I, it gives Jeff the ability to bring the contract back on August 19th so that he can get on the guy's schedule this fall to get that pile...
Okay.
To the tug grinder. And then, if it's okay, Corey has an interesting idea that we could ask him to then give us an option for options two, years two and three, so then we can spend some time, then we want to use them, then we got somebody on contract to do it.
So perhaps redo this motion for, for a one-year contract with options to extend?
For two, for two more years, yeah.
Does someone want to make that motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Peggy, do you have that, so it's a, so a one-year contract with options to extend?
Yep.
Someone want to second that?
I'll second that for discussion and I, I don't really want to discuss the motion,
I'm in agreement with Corey's motion, but I, I'd just like to offer, I think if Jeff could come up with an alternate solution or another solution, because I'm always troubled when I see material being hauled in from outside the village to that site.
And, and I talked to Jeff about that and I told him about what, you know, Mark and I went through that exercise of, I mentioned to you this morning, you're the cost benefit of putting a fence up and a camera and a staff person versus trying to prevent those people from, from doing that. Just, Jerry's referring to contractors and town residents using our site. We know they do it, because we see them down there and the question is, how do you prevent it, is it, is it a cost to do it?
Mike, is it a big issue? We don't know, we don't have cameras down there to see.
Right, 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 yep.
Okay.
Everyone struggles with that same issue.
There was a chain or something, wasn't there, but then somebody had to close it? I thought there was.
It, I, I will tell you, the, the boards throughout the years, particularly during the recession time when we were trying to keep our budget down, we went through numerous reviews and exercises of what to do with yard waste, but most communities, Corey knows that, and it's just, it's a challenge. And Jeff is absolutely correct that people, they love the service.
It's nice.
Yeah.
The other option is, like I see in Madison where people put their waste into like those big bags?
Yep.
And then, we would, would contract with Pelletary River and then people would pay that as a fee, right?
A user fee.
So either, either you're paying taxes to support hauling it away or you're paying the fee to haul it away from your house.
And as I mentioned, I think I mentioned to you that I've raked leaves in Oconomaw with my family, what a pain to put leaves in a brown paper bag, if you have a big pound you're trying to stuff them in there and, and then you got to hit the right time before the contractor picks the bags up and then they have to slice them up and you got, there, we've gone through all these, there's, there's really no good solution to it, it's just, it's a service that we, we have to provide or should provide, so.
We'll talk about it at budget time.
We will, yes.
Okay. So in the meantime, we have the motion, right? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a review of the second quarter financial report. Mike, do you get to do this too? Mike is, how many people tonight?
Oh, oh, thank you.
The month of August, everyone's on vacation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So how's it looking, Mike?
We are, I actually, what I did, I went through and I, I was doing, I was, I look at the bottom line, we're 50% of the way to the year, we're at 52% of the budget, so we're right on budget.
There we go.
Some of the reasons why it's a little bit higher than your pain, your insurance front and, no, I, even in the legal section, we're doing okay.
Shouldn't have told him, why'd, why'd you tell him that he'll increase the bill now?
No, we want to keep it on budget. We're all happy with on budget. Me too.
So I, I really don't have any, I feel really good shape and Lisa does a good job of questioning purchases and department has a really good job of watching what they're spending, so.
Any questions, anyone? That's just a FYI, right?
Yeah.
As Matt leaves, thank you Matt for your expertise tonight.
My pleasure. Good night, everyone.
Parts of that meeting would have been very painful without you here. We would not have known the answers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item F, discussion on possible action regarding Melissa Woodson for the receptionist position. We recommend motion to approve hiring Melissa Woodson for the receptionist position with an hourly rate of $17 and 40 hours per week, except when required for elections and special occasions.
So move.
Second.
So this is in Village Hall, right?
Front, front desk?
Yes.
No, is this vacant now?
For a long time.
For a while, yeah, we had somebody that lost them or?
Some temporary, didn't work out.
It's a temporary, yeah.
This is, isn't this the main reason that we have to be closed to the public on Friday afternoons?
Yes.
So if we get this person hired, maybe we can...
Get back on schedule.
Peggy's smiling, that's the goal.
Well, I will say that when we had the position, when the position was, there was somebody in there, we were getting somewhat caught up on the minutes, for example.
Yeah.